... in progress.
Okay, we'll call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, November 9th. First item on the agenda tonight is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Connolly? Chantet?
Here.
Solfah?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman? Ayazi?
Here.
Malay? Uwer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And Vogelsinger?
Here.
We have 11 out of 14.
Okay, I know that Alderman Malay has said that he would be late and Alderman Connolly does have a good excuse for not being here tonight. He is now a father to baby James Connolly.
And Alderman Lehman also said that she may be late today.
Okay. I did not receive an email or anything, so. All right, thank you. And then up next would be a reminder to please speak directly into the microphone if you come up to speak tonight. The microphone here or anybody that's online, make sure that your mic is muted until you are ready to speak. Up next would be item three, which is items to be removed at or changed. The only thing that I know of is we're going to move item number 22 to 6A to bring the discussion up before we get through all the other tax levies and everything else we have to go through tonight for regular business. We'll pull that up front and get that taken care of. All right, can I get a motion to accept the agenda as changed?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Miller, second by Solfah. Roll call, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly absent. Chantet?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman? Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Uwer? Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
And Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to 0.
Okay, thank you. All right, up next is matters from the public. Do we have anybody here for anything that's not on the agenda tonight? Or anybody online that has it? And if you're online, make sure that you raise your hand to speak so we can see you, since we do have quite a few people online tonight.
Thank you.
And then also remember after you're done speaking to lower your hand so that we don't think you want to ask another question. Okay, up next is item number five, the consent agenda. Alderman Chantet?
One second here.
I'm just checking to make sure you're paying attention, Dan.
Thank you, I appreciate that. We have ordinance 21-63 amending the land use map, the City of Batavia's comprehensive plan. That's 111 and 115 South River Road. The Park District is the applicant. And then we have ordinance 21-64 amending the official zoning map. Remove that we approved the consent agenda, Ezra?
Okay, motion by Chantet, second by Solfah. Roll call, please.
Chantet?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman? Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay? Serone?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
And Serone is aye also.
Thank you. Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Connolly absent. Motion carried 11 to 0.
All right, thank you. We are now past 7:05, so I will open the public hearing for tax levy SSA number 30. Scott, did you want to say anything on this one?
I, this is Peggy's, but I believe this is for the Prairie, Prairie Trail South subdivision. That's the annual levy for this development.
Okay, so this is Prairie Trail South. Is there anybody in the audience or online that wants to comment about this SSA? This is the point in the meeting what we do there.
Good evening. There's a new, rather new requirement that if an SSA annual levy increases by more than 5% that we have to hold a public hearing. And this is for Prairie Trail South for detention there. And the levy increased from 6,000 to 7,450.
Okay. I don't see anybody here in the room that's speaking at. And there's nobody online with their hand raised?
I'm gonna check. There is not.
Okay, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Miller, second by Solfah to close the public hearing on tax levy SSA 30. Roll call, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
No.
No? Beck?
Aye.
Connolly absent. Chantet?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman? Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay? Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
And Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Motion carried 10 to 1.
Okay, thank you. Up next would be resolution, oh, I'm sorry, up next according to our change in the agenda tonight would be item 6A, which would be moving item 22 is authorization to begin, staff to begin negotiation with an annexation agreement for the Thompson Farm Trust property on the southeast corner of Fabian Parkway and Winmouth Road.
Yes, this is a initial discussion with the property owners in regards to annexing the property at Winmouth and Fabian Parkway. We normally, when we have something like this, we would bring this to the council just to get authorization to start discussion and negotiation of an annexation agreement. The one thing that is in particular that the family wanted to get some support or understanding for is that we are in the middle of our sewer study right now. And right now, under the current study, we do not have enough capacity to service this property other than a portion of it. And we are not sure where the results of that study are at this point, but at some point, that'll be completed and we'll find out if we can service the entire property with sewer. Or if not, the family would like to have the agreement by the city to have some other type of alternative sewage treatment system in place for this property, whether that be a land application system or private septic or something to that effect, depending on, you know, how much we're able to service and the implications of it. The family was going to do a study of that to determine the feasibility of that, but they wanted to have some understanding from the city that, you know, we would be in agreement with that if we do not have adequate sewer capacity, once that study is done, to service this property. So I believe they're represented here tonight, and they might provide any additional comments that they may have for that.
Okay, before we have the family, do we have any questions from anybody on the council on this? Is this system that they're talking about, Scott, would that, like the land application one, is that similar to what Mill Creek uses?
That's correct, yes. But you've got a much smaller scale, obviously, but something like that.
Okay. And if we were able to service it, would that require us to have a lift station, just knowing where that property is and location to everything else in our system? Would that...
I do not believe so, no. I think, I think, I think that would still be serviced by gravity. I would have, I would defer to the engineers on that, but I'm pretty sure that's gravity there.
Okay. All right, if somebody from the family wants to come up and present, that would be fine.
I don't know which way the cameras are going. Good evening.
That's good.
My name is Chris Leonard. I am a planning consultant. My office is up at 215 Fulton Street in Geneva. I've been in front of you many, many times, but certainly not recently based upon the lack of activity we have in the wonderful state of Illinois. I have represented us, those are the family with me. Wallace Thompson is in the front row. Lydia Whitehead and Alexandra Coles Thompson is here too. And we really want to underlie the due diligence that we've already done, which makes us suspect that even with the sewer study that is currently going on, as Scott mentioned, that there might not be capacity within your system. And by asking for and having your agreement to do a land application system would give us the ability to develop the property probably more appropriately with a mixed-use, you know, development, which is obviously what everybody wants. The family is undertaking these initial steps themselves because they're very interested in the land. They've been good stewards of the land for all of these years. You can ask any of them questions. They're very grounded within the history of the farm and want to do what's right. But by the same token, we probably are looking for, as Joel's letter said, a density in the neighborhood of two to three units per acre. And that will solely depend on the capacity that you, the City of Batavia, might have in terms of your sewer treatment plant facility and the two lift stations that we're tributary to to get to that. And then in the alternate of that, the results of our land application study that we will do at the family's expense. But the reason that it's important that you give us a direction is that, you know, that study will be a substantial cost. And if you're not willing to allow that system to be implemented, if it proves feasible, then it's really difficult to contemplate any kind of significant development on the property. So that's kind of in a nutshell what we're trying to do and what we're asking for tonight.
Okay. I see our Public Works Director has got his hand up back there. Gary, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we don't get the cart too out, too far out in front of the horse. Trotter is doing a citywide study right now, and we would expect that in the coming weeks, we will know the answer to the question related to treatment capacity and whether we'll be able to serve this property. Certainly at that point, if the answer is we don't have the treatment capacity, then I would encourage them to encourage or to investigate other methodologies. But if they're going to incur great expense only to hear an answer from us that says we can treat them, then they've basically wasted their money because we will require them to come to our sewer system. We're not going to have a land application system out there if we can, we can serve that.
Right. And that's what I think I was going to say was, I think that we should take this in the appropriate steps. Wait for our study to be done before you spend any more money on determining whether or not that system would be applicable to your property. Because I think if we, like Gary just said, if we can service it, we're going to require that you hook up to that. And I would not want to see you go out and spend any money on designing a different system and then have to hook up to ours.
Oh, yeah. I was unaware of that timeframe. We certainly are willing to wait because we would much prefer to connect to...
Right. And I am sure that would give you more property to develop. I, you know, I grew up about four blocks away from that, so I know property pretty well.
Where?
Right off, right off Winmouth Road on Monterey.
Oh, cool. All right.
Yeah. Since I was out there from 71 to 88, you know. I know it very well out there. I've seen a lot of the changes in the area out there, so I really understand. And glad that this is very interesting to see this finally get developed because it's really the last piece within that quadrant of town that's, you know, after the, the other farm that got just approved two weeks ago. You know, this will really be the last piece on that northwest side of town.
We also, we've also worked to, to keep the old homestead, which, you know, isn't historic officially, but it's a wonderful piece of land. It's a beautiful place. And we, we've worked to keep that out. It was this life bit farm way back. That's now a little farmette that's, we managed to carve out. We rezoned through the county and anyway.
You're going to keep that?
Yeah, that's, well, it's now, we sold it and that's now it's being farmed and so just so that original, kind of cool.
All the way back to the little lake, too, on that side?
Absolutely, back down to Little Pond.
Okay, great.
And we were going to incorporate that into any final plans that come before you. So we'll twiddle our thumbs until we hear from you and then we'll be back.
Yeah, I think that's the best thing to do. And, you know, I think that would be the, the right way for both us and you to handle that. So that's what we do and look forward to having you come back after we have an answer and move it forward.
Thank you. And thank you for moving this stuff on the agenda.
Yep, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, up next would be then item number seven, which is resolution 21-103 approving preliminary and final platte subdivision for the Randall Mill Center subdivision, 490 North Randall Road. Randall Road Resources LLC applicant. And who has got that from Community Development? Drew?
Yes. So tonight's resolution would be to subdivide the former Friday's property. The applicant Randall Road Resources is looking to divide off the excess parking into a future development lot. And basically, there would be a .92 acre existing property after dedication and of some additional right of way. And there would be a 1.7, 1.07 acre lot to the south for future development. The Plan Commission reviewed this at their meeting on October 20th. They were in favor of the proposed changes, subject to conditions that are in the resolution tonight. They did have a discussion about the requirement for a sidewalk and when that would be installed. Basically, it would be required by code. But essentially, they, they did agree that it shouldn't, if it's a future development lot, it should be done with the development if it's done fairly soon. So there was a condition of approval that basically Mr. Douglas agreed that if development did not occur within the next year, that he would build it himself. So we've tweaked that resolution, within the resolution, the condition, just to be a little more specific in that the owner of Lot 2, presuming he doesn't sell it, would be the one responsible for that. And it would be basically if a permit's not issued within the next year, that the following spring it would have to be built, so.
Okay. And this is on the Randall Road frontage, right?
Correct, yes.
So it would connect to what's on Mill Street?
Right. So a, it would basically connect at the intersection of Mill and would go down the two properties, providing access for both lots. And then in the future would connect down to, basically, there'd be a gap right now at the Menards and the Verizon, but there would be pickup again at BP probably.
Okay. And have we had any discussions with Menards about doing the rest of that sidewalk? Because I know that's a huge gap.
Right.
To get down to McKee Street.
Yeah, we have not had that conversation. We did not include it with the, the most recent approvals that they went through because it was more focused on McKee Street.
Right.
But probably within, you know, if there's a future application with Menards, we would probably work with them at that point.
Right. And I think that's something that we should pursue because I think if we're going to have somebody next door to that, you know, put sidewalks in, I don't want to see them just end in the middle of that block and not become usable or passageway there or else we're going to get people coming across from those sidewalks, going through parking lots, going along the street, in internal circulation street, and then end up trying to get back to McKee Street, which is not a good idea. So I think we need to make sure that we prioritize that if we're going to have this happen within the next year. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Abby, do you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. It's exciting to see some of these oversized parking lots start to get filled in with new development and more productive space. But, you know, we've, I'm glad that we, we implemented the parking maximum so that we can avoid this in, in the future with parking lots. I noted in your, in your memo, Drew, that they would be under, under the minimum for this site with the new development, but that the shared use would be amenable to everyone. So I thought I would just use this as a plug that I would love, I would love in the future that parking calculations doesn't have to be part of your review of these. We could take that off your list and apply the same parking minimum removal that we did to the downtown across the city, except for industrial as for our previous discussions. But I think it'll be, you know, decades and decades before we're at the density and vibrancy of Randall Road that we will have a parking problem out there. And it would be great to see more of these outbuildings, you know, pop up in these underutilized pots and parking lots. And if we're moving parking minimums would help move that along out there. I think that would be a great conversation that we should have.
I'll agree with you, Abby, but it's just baby steps. We're getting there.
Right, no, exactly. But like, if you agree, could we make that something we discuss here in another meeting? Sorry, somebody's coming upstairs here.
I, I think we, we kind of did discuss a lot of this already prior, you know, with, with the last discussions that we had. And I think it was one of those things that we wanted to see how things go with everything else first before we have that. I don't think that, frankly, that the parking minimums are creating a hindrance to the situation. I mean, this is an example of somebody finding that they have more parking than they needed. And, and, you know, we've had, you know, in the past, some discussions with Coles about their parking lot, about that. So I mean, I think even if we had to, you know, give some type of deviation or zoning variance for that, that's something that would, would happen. I don't, I don't, we haven't been approached by anybody about creating outlots out there. And I don't think that's because it's, it's a parking situation. You know, but I think if somebody was interested in it, they would approach us about it.
I guess I would go with Abby to say that I'd like to have this as a discussion because why create a hindrance if we're just going to say, yeah, we'll talk to you about it if you come to us and say that you want to expand in that property. I would just rather get rid of the hindrance at all because some people just may be turned off by and say, I don't want to bother.
Well, in any case, we would have to have some type of zoning approval for it, whether it's a subdivision or perhaps, you know, maybe variances depending on the circumstances. But, you know, there, there, you know, there would be some type of zoning approval required no matter what. So, I mean, there is a process that would have to happen as part of any type of development approval.
I can add that to a future committee of the whole.
Okay. And I think this is the first, really the first one that we have. And if we have, you know, another one or two within a year, I say, yes, we need to change. If we don't, I don't, I don't know that that's really the hindrance that we think it is. Because if they're not coming to our community development department and asking, why can't we do this? Or would this be a possibility? Can we get a, you know, a change to get to that point? I don't know that we need to change our rules for that.
Right. It wasn't a hindrance with regard to this development.
No, it was not.
The staff indicated that because of the expressed wishes of the, the city council with regard to this parking issue, because of the conversations that we have recently had, that we knew that this would be something that would be easily approved.
Well, and I think that parking minimums are also so ubiquitous at this point that people, that they're very much assumed by the development community. The conversations that I've had where I told people that we have removed them from our downtown are shocked and so in awe of us for, for taking that move. And, and inspired by that, you know, as a wonderful step forward. But, you know, it's so uncommon at this point that I don't think people necessarily are thinking about it as an option. So to put that out there and to use it as a, as a, something to spur more development and more density out there, I think would be great.
I think that's something we should give as a, a research project to our new economic development person and have her bring that back to us to discuss.
Research what exactly?
If we're the only one around that does that? Are we, you know, the third one that's in line doing that within the Coller Counties?
So who in the area has eliminated parking minimums?
If, if there's any, I mean, limits in other cities that have already changed. I mean, before we start making a decision, I'd like to have some, a little bit of research about it. Mark, I see you have your hand up?
Yeah, I don't want to beat a dead horse if we're going to talk about this in a future committee of the whole meeting. But it just seems like you, you have states municipalities that get rid of old antiquated ordinances and laws that just don't make sense anymore. And I don't, honestly, I don't think it matters if anybody else has done it. We can be a leader in the space and, and not just wait for other people to do it and then be like, oh, yeah, other people did it and we lost opportunities because the places were filled in in other parking lots and other neighboring communities. It just, I don't know what we're afraid of. So, but again, I guess this, this is not the place for the conversation. We'll bring it up in another committee of the whole later.
And I don't think we're afraid of it, Mark. I think what it is, is I'd like to have a little bit more information before we make a decision on it and find out if two other cities have tried this for three years and it didn't make a bit of difference in their developments within oversight parking lots, then maybe we need to look at it a different way to try to figure out how we can make it better here when we implement some change. So let's, let's get it on in a future meeting and let's talk about that.
Sounds good.
For tonight, if nobody has any other comments on what's in front of us, I'd like to make the motion that we recommend a council resolution 21-103-R approving preliminary and final platte subdivision for the Randall Mill Center subdivision at 490 North Randall Road, Randall Road Resources LLC applicant.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Rosado. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman? Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye, sorry, wasn't coming off mute.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly absent. Chantet?
Aye.
And Solfah?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to 0.
All right, thank you. Next would be item number eight, which is ordinance 21-59, proposing the establishment of special service area number 68 for Avenue Marketplace, 1898 to 1994 McKee Street and Raising Cane's 1998 McKee Street.
Yeah, I'll cover this one. So this is the first of the two ordinances for proposing the creation of an SSA. This is the proposing ordinance for the Avenue Marketplace, and it would include the Raising Cray, Raising Cane's property. It would be a backup special service area for the driveways, the stormwater maintenance area and any other common improvements like landscaping. And it would only be used in the event that the city had to do some sort of maintenance activity on, on any of those areas. So this is a backup special area, service area. So it would be a zero initial levy. The maximum levy would be 50 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. And the ordinance before you tonight would set a public hearing date on January 18th, which is a city council meeting date following the Martin Luther King holiday.
Okay, does anybody have any comments or questions on this? I know we talked about one last night and it's just a dormant special service area in case the, the property owners do not take care of the detention or the property. Okay, nope, online. I'll make the motion that we recommend a council ordinance 21-59, proposing the establishment of SSA area number 68 for Avenue Marketplace, 1898 to 1994 McKee Street and Raising Cane's 1998 McKee Street.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Miller. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman? Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Uwer? Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly absent. Chantet?
Aye.
And Solfah?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to 0.
All right, thank you. And to the tasty part of our agenda tonight, resolution 21-106-R, authorization of signage grant agreement for Haley Bee's Bakery at 109 East Wilson Street.
Good evening, City Council. We're fortunate to have the business owner, Haley Bulleg, in the audience via Zoom this evening. Haley recently opened... Uh, Haley recently opened the bakery at 109 East Wilson. I hope that you've had a chance to visit. Um, she is in the process of installing a sign for, for her front building while facing Wilson Street and has sought assistance through the city's grant program. And, um, she did provide multiple, um, bids and the selected bidder, um, the, the value of the project is $2,040 and 50 cents. This is a matching grant of up to $1,000. Um, based on meeting all of the criteria of the program and requirements, staff is recommending approval of the grant request. And for your information, uh, the historic commission did review the item and approved a certificate of appropriateness. Um, but, but with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or if Haley would like to say hello and introduce herself, turn it over to her.
Does anybody on the council have any questions? Okay. And then I guess we'll hear from Haley.
Hello, everybody. I'm Haley, um, owner of Haley Bee's Bakery. Um, if you haven't come down to visit, I hope you do soon. Um, I offer cupcakes, cakes, cookies, all kinds of goodies. I'm going to have all kinds of good stuff for the holidays coming up. Um, I'm really excited about this new sign that I'm getting. I think it's going to be super beneficial for my, uh, my business and all the surrounding businesses. Um, one of the most common or frequent comments that I get from a lot of customers is that they can't find me or that they can't read my banner. So I'm just really excited that hopefully this will bring in a little bit more and, um, people will be able to find me a little bit easier. So, yeah.
Hey, does anybody have any questions for Haley? I just want to know when I'm going to get red velvet again.
Soon, soon. Don't worry, Christmas.
Okay. All right. If there's no other comments or questions, I will, uh, make the motion that we recommend a council ordinance 21 dash 59. Oh, I'm sorry, 21 dash 106 R, um, authorization of a signage grant for agreement for Haley Bee's Bakery at 109 East Wilson Street.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Miller. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman? Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay? Uwer?
Aye.
Sarum?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly absent. Chanson?
Aye.
And Sola.
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to zero.
All right, thank you. Okay, up next is ordinance 21 dash 62, amending title 11 of the municipal, uh, municipal code of the city of Batavia, amending the land cash contributions for school and park districts.
Yes, thank you. Uh, this is the revisions to the land cash ordinance that, uh, we had as a part of our three-year review. Um, at that time, the, uh, committee had recommended that we increase the land value from $125,000 per acre to $150,000 per acre. So we have revised the ordinance to reflect that, uh, that, uh, we have also added a, uh, provision that if any development is approved prior to March 1st, 2022, they'll be grandfathered under the current value. Um, so that, you know, their development can follow the current standards and, and, uh, work under those numbers. But after three years, then they would fall under the new, uh, $150,000 per acre value. So, uh, this reflects, this ordinance reflects those, uh, changes and, uh, we recommend approval as written.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? That covered what we had asked to be changed in, in the review or during the review. Okay, if no comments, I'll make the motion that we recommend a council, uh, ordinance 21 dash 62, amending title 11 of the municipal code of the city of Batavia, amending the land cash contributions for school and park district.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Miller. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman? Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay? Uwer?
Aye.
Sarum?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly absent. Chanson?
Aye.
And Sola.
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to zero.
All right, thank you. Um, up next is item 11, ordinance 21 dash 71, proposing the establishment of special service area number 42 for the Nagel Industrial Park, PUD, Farmstead 3, uh, Fabian Parkway and Nagel Boulevard. Scott?
Yes, so we had attempted to create this special service area as part of the Nagel development, uh, two years ago. And, um, it was, um, withdrawn because the property owners had objected to the creation of the special, special service area. This was actually going to be an active special service area that would help pay for the detention maintenance. The declaration that is part of that development, uh, does require the association to collect up to 45% of the value or the detention maintenance costs, uh, and, and collect that for and on behalf of the city. Um, there is no association that is active in that development. And so during those initial discussions, we talked with the, uh, developer and the other property owners about that. Uh, and, and tried to create this special service area and they objected to it. Um, so we withdrew it. Uh, we did have some discussions with, uh, the developer about this and a couple of the property owners. And some of the concerns they had was the maximum levy. Uh, prior, we had a maximum levy of 30 cents per $100 or, I'm sorry, 50 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. And they felt that that was too high. Uh, so we agreed based on the, uh, costs that, uh, we could lower that to 30 cents per, uh, $100 assessed valuation. So that's, you know, about 40% less than what it, what it was, uh, originally. And then we also, uh, revised the, the boundary of the SSA so that we excluded the areas north of Orion Drive. Uh, because those areas, um, the developer felt that they were tributary to the uh, small basins that are along Fabian Parkway and not to our basin to the south. Um, that's only partially true, but, you know, instead of splitting hairs on it, we decided it was just easier just to exclude them uh, from this special service area. So it only includes the properties that are south of Orion. And, uh, and, and that would be the only ones that would be included in this. So we are proposing to once again try and create this, uh, uh, special service area, uh, based on, uh, you know, the current EAV values and how much we've, we've maintained this. We don't think that we will need to levy, uh, the full 30 cents, uh, unless there's something that, you know, is significant, uh, in regards to, you know, um, doing the pond for some reason or something to that effect. But, uh, we feel that the 30 cents is comfortable and we would never levy the maximum amount. Uh, we would only levy the amounts that we need for the actual maintenance of the pond.
Does anybody have any questions, concerns on this one? Anybody online? Anybody in the audience that wanted to speak on this? Okay, hearing nothing, I will make the motion that we recommend a council ordinance 21 dash 71, proposing the establishment of a special service area number 42 for the Nagel Industrial Park, PUD, Farmstead 3, Fabian Parkway and Nagel Boulevard.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Miller. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman? Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay? Uwer?
Aye.
Sarum?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly absent. Chanson?
Aye.
And Sola.
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to zero.
All right, thank you. Um, the next, I think it's five or six items are all, uh, government service. So Alderman Chanson?
Thank you, sir. Let's start with, um, resolution 21 dash 104 dash R, um, that is the authorization to bind insurance. Uh, our insurance policy is, uh, up at the end of this month. We have a new, um, policy with roughly $70,000 increase over last year. And that is despite, uh, some efforts made by staff to, um, cut some costs as best as they could. Um, we are changing up our deductible and, uh, getting some credits, uh, for, for, for that. That said, uh, in all areas, um, it's just going up. It's more expensive, uh, everything from law enforcement to, um, uh, cyber liability, ransomware, things like that. It's just becoming a, a more expensive environment. Um, so Peggy, is there anything else, uh, to add to this? Um, is she not here?
She said no.
Okay, good. Okay, very good. Uh, just then, um, I guess I turn it over to, um, the committee for discussion.
Anybody have any questions, comments on this? Do we think that, I know you made a note in the memo that you wanted to talk about, um, we don't have any coverage on the transmission lines or poles.
Right.
Is that something we've explored in the past? Cause I don't remember us talking about that.
Our broker brought it up about eight years ago, but we haven't been able to find anything that's reasonable because the risk is, is too great. Nobody wants to, uh, quote on it and it's, it's not worth paying several hundred thousand dollars a year for.
Right. And that was going to be my cost is if it were to talk about, you know, if a pole gets struck by lightning or gets hit by a car or breaks off for whatever reason, aren't we better just replacing it and spending the money on that than we are spending 50 or a hundred thousand dollars a year on a premium to try to cover that?
Right. The, the, the real risk is an ice storm or a tornado.
Okay.
So then we would be on the hook for replacing all, you know, all of the poles that were damaged. I just wanted to make, make you aware that we did, um, try to find some coverage this year that was reasonable and we could not.
And overall, we have higher liability coverage just in general. Um, so we're, we're getting pretty good value for what it is that we're getting.
Yes.
Does anyone have any, uh, additional discussion items?
Only one thing I need to get, make sure we get in the record that, uh, Alderman Lehman arrived at 7:40.
So with that, I would, uh, recommend, uh, that we, um, send resolution 21 dash 104 dash R, authorization to bind insurance, uh, to the full council.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Our clerk, uh, please call the roll.
Chanson?
Aye.
Sola?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay? Uwer?
Aye.
Sarum?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Connolly is absent. Motion carried 12 to zero.
All right, thank you. Uh, let's move on to, uh, resolution 21 dash 105 dash R, that is, um, uh, on authorization for a budget amendment. Uh, so the city is, uh, self-insured. We do have a, um, an overage, so we do need to do a, uh, budget amendments for a hundred and $70,000. Um, basically, um, as claims are settled over the years, some of them take multiple years, uh, before they can be settled. And so it's kind of difficult to, to have an exact idea how much money we need set aside. Uh, but that said, we do continue to put money away, um, for this purpose. Um, and we are overshooting this, um, by even more, just to make sure we have enough to cover. So it's an additional 300,000, um, to keep us covered then. Um, Peggy, am I leaving anything out?
No, that's correct.
Turn to the committee for any discussion or any questions?
And that, that number that's being transferred out of that is actually in a cash balance for savings that we normally have for workers comp. It's just not in the budget this year?
That's correct. It's just not in the expense line item. And so for auditing purposes to show that we didn't spend more than was budgeted, we need to do a budget amendment. But we have adequate reserves in the workers compensation fund to cover that. It's just, we never know from year to year what claim will settle and how much those claims will be.
Okay, if there's no additional discussion, um, I would, uh, move that we send resolution 21 dash 105 dash R, um, authorization for a budget amendment.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Our clerk, please call the roll.
Chanson?
Aye.
Sola?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay? Uwer?
Aye.
Sarum?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Connolly is absent. Motion carried 12 to zero.
Great, thank you. Uh, we can take the next, uh, three together, I guess, I know, uh, 14, 15 and 16. That is the, uh, 2021 levy ordinances that includes, uh, the main levy and then, uh, SSA 30 and 62. Uh, everyone saw Peggy's memo. It shows what the, uh, the levy amount is, keeping the rates the same, taking advantage of increases in EAV, uh, year over year. Um, total levy amounts, um, 8.1 million for the main levy. Um, Peggy, I want to make sure I'm, I'm covering this correctly. And I, I will say this much, I remember when I first joined council, this was extremely confusing to me, the levy process. So, um, can you, can you help for, uh, people who have just joined council that they're first time going through this?
Sure. Uh, now, we are a home rule community, so we are not restricted by a limiting rate. Um, we can request any amount in our levy. Um, but the council has always been very conservative in how much they levy. And we, uh, put in an ordinance with a dollar amount and then after the, uh, county does all of their appeals processes and equalization factors and, um, apply the exemptions, then they come up with a, a value and, uh, our levy is divided into that value and that's how they come up with the rate that goes on, uh, the tax bills. So we have to estimate what we believe that rate would be.
Because if we don't, uh, overshoot, we, we don't, we don't get it. We, uh, we miss it for not asking for it.
That's correct. We can never increase the levy, um, after we find out what the estimated extensions are, but we can abate. So we can lower it, but we cannot increase it at that point. And also in late February, we come back to the council with abatements for our, our, uh, general obligation bonds because we, uh, use other sources to pay them. There's only one that we levy taxes for and that is the, uh, Deer Pass, not Deer Pass, excuse me, the Donovan Bridge.
Which we just refinanced a couple of years ago. Uh, so I would turn it over to the committee if anyone has any questions, uh, regarding, um, um, these next three ordinances.
Anybody in the room have any questions? Anybody online?
So SSA 30 is for, uh, detention in Prairie Trail South and the other ordinance is for the downtown SSA for Batavia Main Street.
And a, a note on that, um, so the contribution is 40,000, but we, we levy a different amount based on the fact that money is coming out of the TIF. Um, um, well, the way the county figures that, is that, is that, I stumbled my way through that, but that's basically why the numbers are there.
Yes. Uh, we, we collect 40,000, but a portion of it comes through the TIF. So we only levy 27,000.
Okay. Uh, with that then, if there's no additional discussion, I would, uh, move that we recommend ordinance 21 dash, uh, 68 for the 2021 tax levy, the main levy.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion on this one? Our clerk, please call the roll.
Chanson?
Aye.
Sola?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay? Uwer?
Aye.
Sarum?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Connolly absent. Motion carried twelve to zero.
Very good, thank you. And then moving on to SSA number thirty, this would be Ordinance 21-69. I would move that we recommend approval.
Second, Miller.
Motion in a second. Any additional discussion on SSA thirty? Clerk, please call the roll.
Chanson?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay? Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Connolly. Motion carried twelve to zero.
Great, thank you. So then the last one then for SSA sixty-two, that is Ordinance 21-70. I would move for approval.
Second, Miller.
Motion in a second. Any additional discussion on SSA sixty-two? Clerk, please call the roll.
Chanson?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay? Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck? Beck?
Aye.
And Connolly. Motion carried twelve to zero.
Great, thank you. Moving on to Resolution 21-101-R. This is authorizing the acceptance of an audit proposal and an agreement for our audit services. So we have been with Sickish for some time there, about ten years. And we had been with another firm for fifteen years before that. Staff is recommending that we go on to RFP after this next cycle here. But they are recommending that we accept this five-year term. Very favorable pricing with two percent increases year over year. There is no obligation to stay with Sickich if council chooses not to. But we are authorizing staff to continue based on pre-negotiated pricing. I can say that for the years I've been here, I've appreciated everything that Sickich has done. They've done a really good job and we're an award-winning community for this, aren't we Peggy?
Yes, we are.
So does anyone have any questions regarding the audit proposal and moving on with Sickich for another term? Anyone online or in the audience?
No one online.
Then I guess I would move that we approve Resolution 21-101-R, authorizing acceptance for the audit proposal and an agreement for audit services with Sickich.
Second, Miller.
Motion in a second. Any additional discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Chanson?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye. I just joined.
Thank you.
Sorry I'm late, everyone.
Ewer? Ewer?
Aye.
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 Serone?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Connolly absent. Motion carried thirteen to zero.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. If only we could put all these on good set agenda. Last one for me is Ordinance 21-60. That is the 2020 wages and salaries for non-collectively bargained employees. This is a second reading, second discussion or continuation of the discussion on this. So Alan, actually, I would turn this over to you to facilitate.
Sure. And Wendy is here to start us off on this.
Great.
I just have a couple of things I wanted to add from last weekend or last week that we had talked about. First, I had failed to mention, I apologize, is that whatever the decision is tonight in regards to the non-collective bargaining. Additionally, as you guys may recall, I'll also be bringing forward the ordinance for their paid-on-call following the same amount, whatever we decide. So I didn't do those calculations unless, you know, unless this was going to change. So just so you guys know that. And then the other piece, based on some questions from last week I wanted to answer. We had taken a look at in regards to the pay grade changes and the costs in out-years. So as you know, we had let you know what next year's costs look like. And so just as a reminder for next year's costs for the pay grade classifications, the total cost is forty-two thousand dollars with the finance utility billing section costing at fourteen thousand dollars. And then the department head changes at twenty-eight thousand dollars. And then if you look out into 2023, the cost would be twenty-six thousand dollars. And then in 2024, it would be eight point seven thousand dollars. And then after that, people would be in the appropriate pay grades in regards to cost. And that's with the assumption that nothing changes, that we don't have any changing in a different employee that's on a lower pay grade or whatever the case may be. That's saying that these employees will be in that same spot.
Does anybody else have any questions on this from where we were last week? Mark, is he ever hand up? Go ahead.
No, I just want to say thank you for providing the information. Those are the clarity I was looking for in this to understand future impacts beyond just this year. Because that's important to me. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else online or in the room have any comments or questions?
Yes, Alan Tony here.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I missed the meeting last week when this was discussed, but I just wanted to comment, this changing grades when it came up last year or last time, you know, I had said several times that it wasn't the right time. And part of that reason was it was done after all the collective bargaining. So I do appreciate that this is being brought forward. I do believe that the pay grades are appropriate. And I appreciate that they're not done after collective bargaining. That's something that upsets teachers very regularly when they finish negotiating and then find out that other people are getting much bigger raises than that. But to stay competitive, I do support this.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, do you want to make a motion, Dan?
I do. I'd like to recommend Ordinance 21-60, establishing the 2022 wage and salary ordinance for non-collective bargain employees as outlined in the memo.
Second, Aaron.
Motion in a second. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Chanson?
Aye.
Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck? Beck?
Aye.
And Connolly. Motion carried thirteen to zero.
All right, thank you. All right, up next is item nineteen, the discussion on the dam and depot pond alternatives. Do you want to start us off, Laura?
Sure thing. When city council last discussed the options for the dam removal and depot pond, it was right when we had received the results of the community survey. And what city council expressed was that there were some people who were favorable to removing the impoundment. And then there were others who were favorable toward there being some type of impoundment once the dam is removed. But people seemed to express favorability toward the depot pond continuing to exist. Thereafter, the Batavia Park District Board had a similar discussion with regard to the survey results. And I think they may have been under the impression that city council was, were in favor of A or B, whichever one of those. And so the park board expressed favor toward option B and that being to the steps down. However, as part of their discussion, they also mentioned that if, you know, they are aware that the fire department has particular concern about option E, which contained the rapids on the east side of where the dam would have previously been and the difficulty of rescuing from an area where overhead electric lines exist and that the banks are private property and a very steep decline into some of the deepest water in the Fox River. And so they said perhaps one alternative would be if the city council were to agree that they too were in favor of some impoundment, that there could be future joint discussions about what that type of impoundment might look like. And so I just wanted to bring that information back to you. The park board expressed their wish that if that is something that could be agreed upon, then we can move on to the other aspects of the master plan for the Fox River based upon that common decision and work out the details of the design of it as time goes along.
Okay. Who wants to start?
I got a quick question. Follow-up of what you just said in terms of, just so I'm clear on what the park district was saying. So is it their position that they're willing to discuss with city council various issues regarding what they want to do moving forward only if city council agrees to an impoundment? And if city council does not, then they don't want to have a discussion with us?
No.
Is that the correct understanding?
I don't think it's quite that. I think that if city council were to say that they felt that no impoundment was the direction that they preferred, that then that would be the meeting, the joint meeting would be held to discuss the concerns with one another to determine if there was a path forward. It's by no means sort of an ultimatum that it's impoundment or nothing.
That's what I wanted to hear about.
Right. No, I'm sorry if I gave that impression. I think it's an excellent question that you asked and I appreciate the opportunity to clarify.
Okay. Anybody else in the room or anybody online?
Mark?
Mark, go ahead.
You know, I was not going to just be the first one to jump out and talk, but nobody else is talking. So, yeah, I actually was hoping, I thought this was going to be a joint meeting. So I'm a little disappointed about that. But that being said, I just wanted to bring up a few things. I think it's important right now that we don't miss an opportunity to do something special in Batavia. I think having something like option B that provides something similar to what Yorkville has is an opportunity that is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for us. That being said, I totally understand and appreciate where the environmental commission is coming from. And that the best thing that we could do, the absolute best thing that we could do for the river is to remove all impoundments on the river. Everywhere on the river. And it's not going to happen everywhere on the river. We understand that. Channel Lakes is not going to take up the dam up there. That's just, these are things that are just not going to happen. Fox River study group did say that even doing option B and removing sediment and having the smaller weirs will increase fish passage. And that will be an advantage to the river. It may not be the best advantage, but it is an advantage to the river and the wildlife in the river. As a kayaker, if St. Charles and Geneva were to do something similar, and we didn't, what you're likely to see, because I do this when I plan out kayaking trips, where are the cool parts of the river to kayak? And where do those cool parts stop? I get out where that stuff stops being nice, stops being a great place to kayak. So what I would do as a kayaker is I would go in north of St. Charles, play around in their whitewater feature that they create and then go to Geneva, play around in their whitewater feature they create. And I'd say, okay, the fun's done because the river gets a lot more shallow and in some cases impassable in low water south of Geneva. And I'd pull out, I'd have lunch, I'd have a beer, whatever, get back in my drop-off or my pickup vehicle and I'd head back to St. Charles and call it a day. And I would stop. I wouldn't come down to Batavia. And you will see that from hundreds of people, from every kayaker that is out there to have a good time. They're just going to stop and they're going to not come all the way down to our town. We talked about trying to return things to natural, which again, we should. And every opportunity we can, we should do that. A few weeks ago, we all voted unanimously to install a four-foot pipe from Carriage Crest out to the Fox River to improve the drainage and prevent flooding in the basements of some of our citizens in that neighborhood. Unanimously, we decided to do that. That is not natural. The natural thing to do, honestly, and it would be a really hard decision and nobody would want to do it, would be to say, you know what? We're not going to fix it. We're going to condemn your property. We're going to buy your property. You go find another place to live. But we're going to turn this area back to natural instead of spending millions of all the taxpayers' dollars. Fortunately, we did get some COVID money that's going to pay for that. That city might have been a lot more difficult if we didn't have that money. But we all said this is the right thing to do for those people. I believe that spending the extra money on option B is the right thing to do for all Batavians and for the city of Batavia. It ends up being a recreation destination. Maybe the last of three in a row of St. Charles, Geneva, and Batavia all do it for a place for people to come down and enjoy that, stop in Batavia, get that lunch, get that beer, whatever they can do after they've experienced the river through those whole three cities and we're the last stop, we're the destination. We, several of us in council, listened over the past several months to citizens across the city saying, we don't want one Washington to go forward. And we listened to that and that almost came to an end. Because we listened to the citizens and several of us decided we didn't want to keep moving forward with this because our citizens are saying they don't want it. Parts of council are saying, we know this is the best thing for the city. Ultimately, it's the best thing for the city. It's going to drive the economy in the city. It's a good thing to have in the city. Now, several are saying, yeah, I saw the surveys. But the surveys, I don't care about the surveys. I just want to tear down the dam and return it to natural. And we asked the citizens, literally sent a mailer to every household in Batavia. Citizens responded and gave us an answer saying they want options B or E. Why would we not listen to the citizens now? Why do we choose when we're going to listen to the citizens? Why do we choose when we're going to listen to the citizens? So, those are just handful of things I want to, I want everybody to think about when you start thinking about what direction we want to go in. If we want to keep things natural, we should never ever approve another building project in the city. Because anything we put down is going to add concrete or asphalt or rooftops or whatever, create impervious surface, and it's not natural. So, we can, we can pick and choose what we're going to support, or we can just continue to do the things that we think are going to be beneficial to the economy of the city and to our citizens so that we have a thriving city for as long as, as we're around and many generations past us. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Dan, go ahead.
Thank you. I guess I would say, one, I would piggyback on everything that Mark just said. If he is taking out the checkbook and wants to write a check for something expensive, it must be a project worth looking at. I appreciate that. That said, since I joined council, I have been very interested in this project. I have stayed quiet on purpose over these last several months trying to listen to everyone else's input. My opinion didn't matter. I wanted to hear what everyone had to say. I'm very interested in how this process played out, and I think the citizens are right. I think this is closest to, this is, this is something we can, we can get behind. It is roughly what it was that I wanted before we had this opportunity to vote on it many years ago. I was envious of, of the cities south of us who, who took this and did the riffles. I think this is the right direction, and I, I hope we can, we can support something like this. So, thank you, Mark, for your leadership on, on pushing for this. This is definitely a project worth, worth standing behind. And it's not just, not just because you, you're throwing money at my Carriage Crest.
Okay. Abby? Go ahead. You're muted, Abby.
Sorry. I don't know why pressing unmute is not working tonight. I, I wanted to follow up on a couple of things that Mark said because I think, I think that that debate is really interesting about what's natural and what's unnatural. And so my two cents to throw into that is that we get into trouble when we talk about human life as being separate from nature, that we are separate from the environment somehow, that we are not part of the environment. So, it's not so much that a vote against something natural or vote for going the natural route is then contrary to any unnatural vote down the line. We are part of a web. We are all connected to everything that we do has, has a ripple effect down the chain, right? So, doing what's best for nature, doing what's best for the river is ultimately what's going to be best for everyone in this ecosystem, and that includes us. Now, bees build hives and birds build nests, and we build One North Washington. We're all kind of doing the same thing, and we're all connected, and we all have impacts on each other. So, so next time when we do start talking about building again and you tell us it's unnatural, I'm going to come back, and that's my little retort to you already on that part. And that being said, as I've stated before, that the, the impoundment in the river, and we've seen from, from our environmental council, Environmental Commission that counsels us on environmental issues, from the Fox River Study Group, that the health of the river is the number one priority in advising my vote and the cost as well. I think having a beautiful free-flowing river will be an attraction that kayakers and canoeists and the general public, those of us that don't get in the river and paddle, will be able to enjoy on a regular basis. You know, the idea for me in terms of economic development, regardless what happens to the river, is that we want to have the kayak rental place downtown Batavia so that, like Mark said, when people go upriver and come down, they stop here and they get out of their boats, and they grab a beer, and they grab a drink, and they do that. But they can do that in option A, just the same as they can do that in option B, but it saves us a lot of money. I don't think any revenue that we generate off of this attraction of having riffles is going to make up the $6 million difference in the two proposals. But it's still going to be something we can celebrate. It's still going to be something new and different for the city of Batavia to embrace and to love. And I, I just don't see the, the price tag being worth the continued degradation of our river and the added recreational benefits that I just don't think are going to be enough to really warrant the extra expense.
Thank you. Tony, go ahead.
Thank you, Ellen. I would say, I agree with Mark 100%. We have an opportunity here. The way I see it, we just spent $16 million for something our citizens did not want. Surely, we can spend $6 million more to put into Batavia something special like this. I fully support it. B.
Okay. Nick?
Yes. Thanks. I always liked that answer. B. I, I support B too. I, I will say this, just to quickly retort, Tony. The difference on that is, I do agree with Abby that this won't pay for itself. The 16 million is being paid for by the, by the increased tax. So, knowing where the source of the funds comes from is going to be important. And while I support B, that's an important variable. I guess I, I just want to question more for Laura to, to clarify. Are, are we going to have a, a meeting with the Park District? I, I would be curious as to what, how they, how the differences, what differences they need to make to feel more comfortable with it? And I'd also like to see, I know the Fire Department is recommending against it, but I also know they always have a plan. So, I, I'd love to see what, what plan would be in place if it does move forward to, to make sure it's, it's safe.
In the opinion of the Fire Chief, E, as it is designed, cannot be made safe. And the city of Batavia does not even own proper equipment in order to safely enter the water to rescue someone who needs it. And if they were to go through the expense of acquiring the equipment, they would also need to install several tie-down areas that would, I'm not sure how all of that would impede what the recreational aspect of this is. So, I don't, I don't think that the E design will, we would be able to accommodate operationally. However, that being said, the discussion with Hitchcock Design Group and the Park District Board was, it doesn't have to look exactly like the E design. Perhaps it could be flipped around so that, and the Fire Department did say that they would be able to safely perform rescue from the, I'll call it the river rain side of the waterway. Because there is sufficient area for vehicle access up the peninsula on that side, and it doesn't have the same topography, nor does it have overhead electric lines. And what was the first part of your question?
Well, the Park District, what, I, I'm, I guess confused as to where they stand. They, they supported B, but then they kind of, I, I didn't understand, they were looking to, to alter it to a degree, and that's what I'm looking to understand.
I, I would say they, they would love if we said, B is it, and let's move forward with B. The reason why they said, looking at making changes to it, was to address the concerns of individuals on City Council who wanted to see more of a free-flowing river, to, and to say that, is there some, you know, hybrid of it that would make both feel comfortable?
Gotcha. Okay.
So, in other words, decide to go forward with a concept that is like B with the understanding that it may not ultimately look exactly like that. So, they were, they were saying, make changes to accommodate some on City Council who were uncomfortable with B.
Okay. So then, is there anything in place, any, any plans for a, another meeting? And I guess the next...
100%. 100%. That would absolutely be the next step. Alderman-Saron would be then to have that joint meeting, perhaps with the understanding that we all seem to be coalescing on something like B, and give Hitchcock Design Group the feedback necessary to move forward with designing something that both the Park District and City Council approve of, as well as doing that planning on the other areas of the Batavia corridor of the Fox River.
That, that's awesome. The only thing I would recommend before we bring in Hitchcock would be to have the, the discussion of how this would possibly be paid for and, and the roles of, of all the governmental bodies.
Sounds good.
And just for people in the audience to know, once the council is done discussing this, then we'll have public comment on it. So, once we get done, the 14 of us talking about this, then we'll, we'll get to that. Chris, you're next.
Yeah. So, I keep on hearing about all of these economic advantages and how it's going to be bringing everybody, all these tons of people into Batavia and kayaks. I don't know how often everybody on council drives through Yorkville. I do quite often on my way back and forth from various courthouses. I never see a kayak on that river, ever. I will admit that I don't go there on the weekends, but when I have been on the weekends, which is not as often as during the week, I still have never seen a kayak in that river going down the Whitewater Rapids. In terms of people going from St. Charles to Geneva, and then they're going to stop in Geneva if there's no whitewater in Batavia, that makes no sense. They're going to stop where there's no longer whitewater, if they're going to stop anywhere to get out. If there's whitewater in Batavia, you know where they're going to go? It's going, the whitewater's going to be right in the middle of our downtown, or the rapid area, whatever you want to call it. It's going to be right in the middle of our downtown. They're going to go past that, they're going to go past the downtown, they're going to go probably down to the islands down here, and then try to find a spot to get out when they park their car down at that end. Okay? They're going to bypass anything in terms of businesses in Batavia. With the other alternative being, let's say they go through Geneva and they come down, they want to go under the bridge, and then they're going to stop in Batavia when there's no longer any thing to play in, as Alderman-Ur was indicating. So, I just don't see any argument as to how economic advantage should play any role in any way whatsoever as it relates to what choice is made here. I would also pose the same question to the Park District in terms of what their additional programming is going to be that's going to generate so much money for them by having option B versus option A. I just don't see it. I'd love to see numbers that show it's a $10 million advantage. I don't understand it. I don't see it. I'm for option A.
Leah? You're next.
Thank you. So, first of all, I understand, you know, that each of us on City Council and on the Park Board and even our residents, we all are coming at this with our own individual priorities, things that we think are important. You know, our Environmental Commission, they're coming at it with something that they truly value, and it is their most important. Our residents are coming at it with something that they believe is their most important. Some City Council, we each have things in our heart that we think is our most important. Some of it could be taxes, keeping taxes down, our downtown economic vitality, tradition and history, the value of our homes. These are all very important, and that's what makes this special, is that we come together, we discuss, we hear, we hear our thoughts, and then we have to like move forward and make a wise decision. I, I agree with Mark, with what a lot of Mark said, that I do believe that B could facilitate some economic growth downtown. I do believe that having an active riverfront is good for a town. It brings people here. As somebody who works in the heart of downtown Batavia, I see and chat with many, many people daily who have taken advantage of our riverwalk. Some are residents, and some are not. Some are from neighboring communities. So, there are people beyond who just live on Water Street who care very much about what is happening in our downtown with the Depot Pond. I hear what Abby's saying, as somebody who grew up in Alaska, and I'm a very active hiker, walker, biker, adventurer, nature photographer. I love being out in nature, and I truly value it. But I do think that keeping the Depot Pond and creating a really active riverfront is good for nature, and it's good for humanity. It creates a symbiotic relationship where we get people outside enjoying nature, which then builds appreciation for it even more for future decisions. And I also agree with Nick that we need to figure out who's paying for what, and we need to start figuring that out soon. And I have some other thoughts and questions, but they're a little bit more in the weeds, so maybe more for the joint discussion with the Park District, so. But at this point, I do lean towards B, and I would vote for that.
Nick?
Nick, you got your hand up again? Or you just have your hand up?
Sorry. You even told us to take our hands down at the beginning. Sorry.
Just be like a teacher. I'll just keep telling you until you get it right.
Ask my teachers. They'll know. You have to tell me three times.
Okay. I'll remember. Keenan, go ahead.
Yeah, everybody knows where I'm at with this. I was clearly for option D in the beginning. And with the, in the interest of compromising and going with something that both entities could benefit from, saving the Depot Pond was the Park District's sole thing they said. If it wasn't that, it was a non-starter. One of our master plan options or projects is to start connecting the Fox River Trail up and down the river. Option A gives us the berm that gives us the start of our fixing the river trail along the west side of the river. It also saves the Depot Pond. It's much cheaper than one of the riffle options, and when you take the dam out, the water has to go from elevation, elevation A to elevation B already. If it's anything like the rock formations that are already there, we probably already have something that's back behind there that gives us the riffles or some sort of active waterfront. You know, spending $10 million on that section and not looking at spending money back here behind El Cezanne and Red Hots, which has been a mess since I've gotten here, and what I've talked about doing for many years, like we could use that money to really enhance our actual riverfront. Still save the Depot Pond and, and allow the Park District to continue their water programming that they want to continue on the Depot Pond. People will still use the river up and down the river all the time. But we've, we've, going back to Mark's comments, and then we had this discussion a couple of times ago about, we, we chose the most expensive option for Carriage Crest because the city did its due diligence, and it just so happened that the best option was the most expensive. You know, when I was talking about option D, I had a lot of vision, a lot of planning, but the Park District did not do any type of due diligence of what they could put on the Depot Pond, or what they could do with options A, B, or E in terms of kayaking, whitewater, whatever it is. They're just asking us for money to do it and then walk away from it and leave it there. So, the questions have, and Mark posed these questions early on, like who's paying for what? We asked that question the very first meeting. We still don't have an answer. We asked the question about what kind of programming. We still don't have that answer. So the questions have, and Mark posed these questions early on, like who's paying for what? We asked that question the very first meeting, we still don't have an answer. We asked the question about what kind of programming, we still don't have that answer. So financially and fiscally responsible thing for us to do is not spend this much money to maybe still have something we already have there, but we still save the Depot Pond, we're able to start advancing our water Fox River Trail Plan to start. And then we can start looking at knocking off the low-hanging fruits along our Fox River Trails on the east and the west sides of the river. So I'm I'm for option A solely.
Thank you. Sarah, I see you have your hand up, go ahead.
Yeah, the, Keenan, I'm glad you brought up the area behind El Cezanne and Red Hots. I've walked past that a bunch of times and thought that is such a missed opportunity because it is right on the river and that would be such a cool place for people to eat or congregate or whatever. I was glad to see in the Fox River Commission notes that option B wasn't the worst option, I guess, but they prefer option A, it sounded like, as does the environmental commission. I think that those are important points that we should listen to. I think the whitewater would be fun for people in kayaks and boats. I also, in the summer, see a lot of paddleboarders. They wouldn't be able to paddleboard through that, so, I don't know, just something to think about. And as a bottom line, who is paying for this giant cost? Are we sharing this with the Park District? Is it all up to us? That's something I think we need answered. Thank you.
Thanks. Mike?
Yeah, I'm for exploring option B further as well, not just for what the Alderman says, but we got an overwhelming response from our residents and the people that live right there on the river, and I would hate to be a homeowner and have the thought of the Depot Pond disappearing. I think the river has to be a focus for us and I think the river, the development on the river will make our town more vibrant. And I think this will lead to cleaning up those other areas that we are concerned about. So I am definitely in favor of, I mean, going for option B.
Yeah, I guess I'll throw my two cents in now. From the beginning of this, long before we ever got to this point of discussing this with the Park District and what was going to happen with the pond and everything, I've always been a believer that the best thing we could do for the river would be to take the dam out, deal with whatever nature provides us with after that. And the more that I've studied it, the more that I've heard descriptions of places that that has not been done and only been done in parts of rivers, it doesn't really turn out the way people envision it. And, you know, I've tried to, again, like Chris said, think about what the economic development would be if we had what, you know, any kind of rapids in in that area or what we do. And the more that I thought about it, I started to think back to how long it's been since I've been able to put a boat in out of the boat ramp or in Fabian, and it's been at least ten years, maybe more, because the water level's been so low with the dam where it is now and where it's excessively dropped as it's breached more and more every year. And how much of economics are we missing by not being able to use the features we already have along the river between here and the Fabian Forest Preserve? And if we were to go back, fix the impoundment and bring the water level back up and then utilize what goes through there to create the new feature along the east side of the river, then all those opportunities for boating, fishing, jet skiing, all those things would come back because the river level would come up. So it's not just about do we save the Depot Pond, do we let the river flow free and try to do the best thing in our little, you know, couple miles of the river that we have here within Batavia, but to take a step back and think about what we've talked about for probably the last ten years, that we need to look at boundary to boundary in Batavia, from Fabian Parkway to the south end of town on the river and look at it holistically, the whole thing, and not ignore it. And we do need to talk about where we're going to come up with money to do work behind the buildings just to the south of us that have been ignored for fifty years, what was along the river, and then also what we do in the stretch south of here. You know, if we're going to try and improve the river, improve the usage of the river, we need to think about all those places, and it's not going to be cheap. And no matter what solution we pick or what idea we think is the right thing, we're going to have to spend money on it. We're probably going to have to spend double what we're all talking about to do the dam and try and re- return the impoundment to some state where it actually is usable for any kind of economics. So I think that we have a lot of good questions that we need to move forward with. I think if the majority of this council wants to have B and that's where we think we're going to go, then I think we have to get the Park District back in here and we have to start nailing down some of the real questions. Who owns what when we're done with this? Who pays for it to get it to where we want it? And then where do we go after that? And how committed are we to go after that? Because this isn't just something that's going to happen in the next five years to get this done. This is another twenty-five or thirty years or more to get through the rest of the mileage that we have up and down the river to try to utilize it for, you know, whatever we want to do, living with the nature that's there or changing what's there or expanding what's there, whether it be for the natural side of it or the economic side of it, whatever we think is the right thing to do, this is not going to be a cheap enterprise. This is not going to be something that, hey, we decided we're only going to spend four million instead of twelve million and it's going to be the greatest thing in the world for us. We're going to have to keep spending money along the river to maintain those things that we either create or return to some natural state. They don't just stay there. There's, I hate to use the the fluid pun, but things are very fluid out there and they will change constantly. When I first moved into Batavia, Fabian Parkway Bridge was being built. We used to sneak down and get out onto the barges that were out in the middle of the river while they were building the piers out there and fish off of them. And fish were pretty disgusting that came out of the river. Today, the river is extremely clean. If I could catch a walleye as long as my arm, I would fillet it and take it home and eat it. That's how clean they are. So they're out there. I've heard of two more forty-two, forty-three-plus muskies that have been caught in the last month out of this river. So it's clean, those fish are beautiful when they come out of this river. Our city attorney from North Aurora to St. Charles catches gorgeous little smallmouth all the time and takes pictures of them. So the reality of how good our river is, I don't think we should forget that. I think we can make it better and I also think that we can achieve some of the goals that everybody wants, something better for the river and be better stewards of it and attain something that we could be proud of to let our children and grandchildren take care of after we're gone. That's where I think we need to go and I think we need to get behind whatever we as a council come up with as that plan and then figure out how we pay for it and who pays for it and get it done. I don't think we should just keep talking about this. It's been twenty, almost twenty years I've been on the council and this has been a constant that entire time, and I think this is the time that we have to move forward. And I think if we don't get this done, what little bit comes from the state is going to be gone.
Your Honor?
Yeah, I I just want to kind of piggyback on what you just said about the money on this thing. I don't think we really know what the real number is. And I think that there's going to have to be some serious conversation with the Park District about just what the design is going to be. Most of you in this room remember, I made my speech here several months back when we were discussing getting rid of the Depot Pond and I was emphatically against that and I think that would be a travesty in Batavia's history and would be an insult to a number of people who were some of those, before I was mayor, who really put this idea on the table of getting the Fox River built, Peg Bond, Phil Elstrom, Walter Koth, a number of folks like that who really put their heart and soul into this thing. So I I strongly support the idea that, you know, we do something, but I think we're going to have to look at the money. I'm not so sure that at the end of the day, if we want to go for some of this bigger stuff, that this is going to have to, may have to be a referendum, that we may have to go to the citizens of Batavia and ask them if they're willing to support multi-millions of dollars on this thing. Now, I will publicly sit here today and tell you, I am not in favor of Whitewater Rapids. I served for nine and a half years as a member of the Batavia Fire Department and I have several very wild memories, my mother used to call it my wild and crazy youth, of going into the Fox River with ropes and the fire chief, Bob Hodge, and myself. We were trying to rescue a gentleman who was in a kayak and he didn't know where the dam was and he went over the dam and he hurt himself and he had a broken arm and he had all kinds of stuff. Fortunately, we were able to get a rope on him, but three times while we were trying to hold him in the river up his head above water before we could get him out because we didn't have a lot of help coming at us for a while, he went under the river, he went under the water and I thought a couple of times we lost him, but by, using all the muscle I had and all the muscle Chief Hodge had and a couple of other folks, we were able to get this guy, kept his head above water. So I come from a real background where I've had some real bad wild rescue experiences on the Fox River and we've had a couple very near the dam since I have been the mayor. We had one here, I I was just out to the fire department today and pulled the report on it. Now, we had a gentleman come down to the boat club one night and he decided he was going to commit suicide, which he did. And he drove his car into the Fox River, right at the boat club, the car folded south down the river and one of our street department snow piles was going by and they saw a flash inside the car and the gentleman had put a gun to his head and killed himself in the car. So this car floats down and it gets on the east bank of the river, which is the natural inclination of all the water to flow in that direction because it was designed to get that water underneath the challenged windmill factory is what we're dealing with to this day. And all of a sudden, that car went down into the river and totally disappeared. So it was nighttime, so the Batavia Fire Department tried to do what we could do and we needed divers. So we didn't have a dive team, so we had a call for mutual aid, so we brought in some other fire departments. And the fire departments came in and they went down in the river and in about fifteen minutes, two of the divers came out of the river with their heads and he came over to Chief Darren, who was then running the thing, and I was standing there and they said, "Chief, we've checked the car down there and this gentleman's dead in the car, so you don't have to, nothing you can do to rescue him, but we would recommend for the goodness of the members of the fire departments and the rescue teams that are standing here, that we stop this operation right now and don't do anything in the dark because we have just experienced what we feel may be one of the deepest parts of the Fox River of its whole length, right here in Batavia on the east side of the Batavia Dam." And so the next day when it was light out, we brought in big tow trucks and the divers came back and they hooked the car back up and we pulled that thing out. And one of the divers told me, he estimated it was well over thirty feet deep right there. It was a huge hole. And I just shudder to think of us putting Whitewater Rapids on the east side of that river and then have, God forbid, an accident, we get some kayakers or somebody down there and we got the Batavia Fire Department down here trying to rescue somebody in a thirty-foot hole in the Fox River. And so I think that that is something that I'm not putting my name on. So if you want to put Whitewater Rapids in here, you better have a majority of the city council ready to vote it because they're going to have to override my veto because I am not in favor of that and I've had the experience and I just told you why. So I I think that this is a worthwhile thing. The other thing I would say is, I sat here tonight and I listened to people talking about experiences of things in other towns, and I'm not going to speak for any of their towns. I will tell you, I've talked to some of the neighboring towns about what their plans are for the Fox River right now, and I didn't hear much planning. There's there's some ideas that are kicking around in some of the other communities, but I'm not going to say who, but I've had some just kind of roll their eyes when I talked about it and say, they're probably not going to do it. So we'll see what we see, but Batavia seems to be the place right now where the river is being talked about and I'm all for it. I think the Depot Pond is a beautiful thing to have in downtown Batavia, the development along it has been terrific, the bike trail, the the riverwalk. And I was elected mayor in nineteen eighty-one when that bike trail was being preserved, being presented, and I will tell you that I went through hell, fire, and damnation with a whole bunch of people who didn't want that bike trail built or that riverwalk built, that that was going to be the worst thing that we ever did in Batavia, we were going to depreciate property values, we were going to have drug dealers, we were going to have burglars, we were going to have everything else and their brother down on the bike trail causing problems. Well, and then they didn't also like river rain, that was going to be a negative thing in Batavia, so now I can sit here forty years later and think of all the lifelong Batavians who've been able to move into river rain and live out their lives in security and dignity because we did build that. And then I can look at the thousands of people who come through Batavia and ride that bicycle trail on both sides of the river, and we're the only town along the river here that has these bike trails totally on both sides of the river. And we're the ones that do and I'm very proud of that fact, but there was a lot of people who didn't want any of this stuff. So there's there's a lot of come see, come saw in the history of this town of things that have been done. But I will tell you, I think that put Whitewater Rapids in the Fox River on the east bank would be a very, very dangerous situation and I'm not putting my name on it.
Jen?
To kind of piggy off some of, some of the comments that have been sent to us, some of what people have talked about, if you take a look at Plan A, it does preserve the pond. The pond does extend on the concept to most of the homes along the river. So the pond is still going to be there and you can keep hearing, save the pond, save the pond. Option A does save the pond. Additionally, we talk about bringing people down, some of the, talking about all the proms and the people coming down. When they come down and take pictures, they don't stay. They don't stay in our community, they don't eat. They come down and they take their pictures and they move on to their activity. What people do at the pond is they walk around and they take, they look at it. They don't get into the water, they don't bring kayaks, they don't bring canoes, they don't even do the paddle boats that are here. You can see that by just looking at what happened this summer, that activity just wasn't there. When you see the activity, you see the people walking around, you see the people fishing in our river. One thing that the mayor's talked about are all the aged homes that we have here of the people, they're not going to go into the river, they they want to enjoy the river along the river. And what we really need to do is we need to build up our river along the riverside. We've invested a lot of money over on the Depot Pond area. It is time for us to not only preserve that and keep the pond that's been requested, but also start developing our riverside so people can enjoy that also. And that brings the people to our downtown, accessible to our stores, to our shops. As it's been alluded to, there, this is going to be a lot of work and it's going to take a lot of time and a ten thousand dollar rapid is just not going to do it. There is a lot more that needs to get done in our community and we have to look beyond that, we have to look beyond just one project of adding the rapids there. We have to look from the top to the bottom and think of that development and we have to start taking care of it and then eventually we might be able to upgrade some things, but we have to start just developing and make it nice for everybody and accessible.
Okay. Abby?
Alderman Baron just took most of my my notes from top to bottom, so thank you. You reiterated the point that the pond was not going to disappear and just the idea of starting from a place of, you know, half the cost, because there are so many infrastructure projects that we want to do up and down the river and in our downtown and around our town that it feels like we're putting all of our eggs in one basket to not not achieve any additional goals for our downtown. I was, I was recently having dinner in downtown Naperville, right on the river, and the Duped River is a beautiful draw and it brings a lot of people to walk along that riverwalk and the development along that river has been substantial and there's no riffles, like it's not, it's it's a pretty calm, it's a pretty calm river for most of the area downtown. It's going to be the draw that we allow it to be, that we invest in it based on what's on the riverfront. We keep talking about the riverfront, but between the two plans, A and B, there's no difference in the river frontage on the land, you know, next to the river. We're just talking about what's going into, what we're paying to put into the river. Let's talk about what, how far that money could go on the, on the, on the edges of our river where we want people to gather and we want people to be spending money and to be appreciating this natural resource. I I think that's the more holistic way to think about it and not just what kayakers and canoeists, how much money- how much fun they'll have going through that couple hundred feet stretch.
Mark?
Yeah, thanks, Alan. Abby and Jen, you're absolutely right. We need to think about the whole river. And we've decided to start right here in the, talking about the dam and the Depot Pond. I absolutely think we need to develop the whole river. And Alan said it before, it's going to cost a lot of money. I think that, I know Chris had mentioned that, well, people will pull out before then. You know, that's, that's not going to be a draw. It is though, because if you look at, you look at the study from the IDNR years ago and take the Fox River group, put it out today, the river will be significantly more shallow north of the dam. Alan talked about it, that, you know, Whitewater, we're doing the boats and the jet skis and stuff, never again, obviously. But in a lot of cases, because it will be shallow, I think as low as two feet or lower is what I saw in the, in one of the drawings today, and I've seen that before from the, from the IDNR, it will become a place that it just, it'll be, it'll be a stream more than a river. And at times, not all the time, obviously high flow, it ends up, you know, filling all that space that would be, that would be lost. But I would, I envision, Chris, you said that they'll get out, you know, later, they'll, they'll get out near the islands down in Clark Island. Well, if you develop and just south of where the dam is right now, and hopefully somebody develops there soon, and you have places for people to pull off there and visit those establishments, if you have the establishments for people to pull off, they'll pull off. And I'm telling you, I've done it dozens of times where it's like, this is where we want to get off. This is where we want to have lunch. This is how we want to do it. You have to have an attraction. So it's chicken and egg. We got to, but we're the, we're the ones that get to choose what comes first. We're the ones investing in this. But we, yeah, we have to think the whole thing top to bottom. It's very expensive. And there's questions about who's going to pay for this. Well, we just put out the survey. And the people looked at the numbers that were out there and they still said, "Yeah, it's an investment in our town. We'll pay for it. The citizens pay for it. We all know that." And Tan called it out earlier. For me to say that I'm willing to increase taxes to pay for this, that's huge. You guys have listened to me for the last four and a half years complain about raising taxes. And I think that this is an investment in our town. This isn't just, it's not just the cost that, that we look at and, and I argue about it. I argue about a lot of the costs. I sit there and say, "Well, cut back on training a little bit," you know, and somebody could turn around and say, "Yeah, Mark does an investment too in our staff." And you're right, there's, there's a lot of things that we can choose to invest in. And I think that this has a long-term potential of being a huge investment for this town. I think, I think we're not giving the Park District enough credit and maybe they're not giving, maybe they're not articulating their vision well, but, you know, they're trying. And they're trying to create something special. They're trying to be part of something special too. And I think we just, we, we need to do what we can to try and support this as much as possible to try and give ourselves some economic vitality. And Mayor, I agree with you. I do not want the rapids on the east side of the river. I think that's a horrible idea. There's only one access point. You can't, obviously there's a huge wall there. You can't access anybody from along that wall. Drawing E, and I've said this before in other meetings, that's a horrible drawing. That drawing that they drew, that's a waterfall that they, that they created there. It just, they're trying to represent, hey, we'll throw some rapids in. We can accomplish those, those rapids without having it go along the east side of the river. It would be better along the west side of the river for everybody involved. So that's it. Everybody kind of knows my piece, but I'm happy to talk about this more as a group or individually if anybody wants to talk with me about it more.
Okay. Jen?
I just, I just want to add that we have to remember that some of the property that's south of the bridge, really past Bird the Word, is owned by the Park District. And we're getting ready to speak about that on the east side of the river. They have a bunch of open land there that's owned by the Park District. So that's not really up for much of development. And then across the river is the city-owned stuff along with the power station. So, you know, to really do any development over there, thinking immediately for people to get off, there's not that, really that opportunity to build down there. It's more around the downtown area.
Chris?
So I just have a quick question before I make a comment, and maybe Laura can help me on this one. In terms of the survey, would you say that there was less than a 4% of the total population in the city of Batavia participated in the survey?
There were just over 1,000, so 1,000 and change, less than 1,100.
Less than 4%. So we have a unsilent minority that participated in the survey. And in terms of people I've actually heard from that have reached out to city council, I would say that over 95% have been residents of Water Street. So again, an unsilent minority. So I just think any reference to anybody, and I'm not sure, I'm not saying I'm quoting somebody exactly, but any reference, anybody has said that we did a survey that people have spoken, I think is a total fallacy. Yet less than 4% of the people that have spoken. I don't think that's really accurate at all. So I just wanted to point that out in terms of people have not spoken. We didn't really have a huge turnout with the survey. I know that there's, there never really is, but I just don't like to hear people make comments like, "People have spoken. This is what the city of Batavia wants." That's why I have said what my support is. My support is A, because it, it kind of compromises with what everybody wants. You're going to save the pond, which I thought was like the main focus of everybody who was so worried about the dam being removed, but you're also going to make it, from an ecological standpoint, it's going to be healthier for the river to remove the dam. And then for what I truly believe is the majority, the silent majority, you're also going to not be raising the taxes as much, which in all reality, nobody really cares about a lot of things until they see their tax bill come and then all of a sudden they say, "Oh, well, jeez, who didn't know it was going to be that much?" When they all had the total opportunity to know their taxes were going to be increased and this is what's going to happen. And they probably shouldn't have been a silent majority. They should have been unsilent. But it's why Option A, I believe, serves as a compromise for saving the pond. People who are worried about taxes, also the ecological impact that the removal of the dam has in terms of creating the more natural river. So that's, that's my additional two cents to what I said before. And I just wanted to make sure that we're not saying that people have spoken, but if you reference a survey of less than 4% turnout.
Thank you. All right. It looks like we are done with comment from council, both online and in the room. So I think now we'll open it up for public comment. If you want to figure out who wants to come up first, use the mic up here. All we need for the record is your name so that we can have your name in the record.
Hi, my name is Nancy Bell and I would like to respond to Christopher Solfa. I think the people have spoken. That if you sent a survey out and nobody answers it, that means nobody cares except for the ones that answered it. Second thing is, if you're so concerned about the, the health of the river, then why doesn't the city put in an ordinance about the types of fertilizer and pesticides that are put on lawns? That's killing more fish. And then let somebody else address the other things, but I just wanted to respond to you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Mike Eckblade. I'm about to move into the Corey Stone Pond. For about a half hour, listened to people talk about all these different options. And every one of these options that I guess have been given, it's something that all of us are going to have to pay for. I didn't hear anybody talk about replacing that dam with a hydro-electronic or hydro dam, a brand new one. The government does give grants and do fund these new dams and they are environmentally friendly. So we would save a pond. We would keep a dam. We would keep high water levels. We would not increase taxes to all of us. We would not lose anything. You'd have money for your berm. Fire department's already adept to having a dam and, and taking care of rescuing people. We wouldn't have to do the, the water rocks going down. I don't understand why this wasn't even...
As far as I know, the last time and anytime we've ever discussed that with the IDNR, they will not replace that dam with anything. They do not want to replace the dam. They do not want the dam in the river.
Has anybody asked other than DNR?
Well, DNR has authority over it.
I'm just asking, the only reason being is I'm a little late to the party and apologies if this has already been done or discussed.
We did discuss it and when we originally discussed this probably, I don't know, 15 years ago, we looked at hydroelectric and what was available at that time, it was no way, shape, or form feasible to do it. There was no money available for that. No grants available for it. No technology available to do it with the drop in the river that we have. It's really, I think about nine-foot drop that we could attain out there with the current pool we have. And you can't change the hydraulics of the river, the size or the impoundment of it without approval from the Army Corps of Engineers.
So there's no way to do this?
Well, as far as I know, there's no way to rebuild the dam in the current state or the current height that it was at, that the state of Illinois or the Army Corps of Engineers wouldn't allow.
Well, the only reason I raise the curiosity is because it took me about less than a half a second to type into Google. And I got a list and it talks about getting grants for different dams.
In Illinois?
Anywhere. These are government grants and these are actually, we're talking about 15 years ago.
Colorado, Oregon, they're doing all kinds of hydraulic or hydroelectric power.
Right. The dates on these are, the dates on these, July 15, 2021, Senators introduce a bill to improve dam safety and modernize. I don't know if this is in Illinois. And like I said, I might be a little out of line or a little late to the party on the idea.
It's fine and, you know what?
But it seems it would solve every, every one of the questions or every one of everybody's concerns here, if we can see if this works. But I can tell you this, over 20 years, I don't know how many thousands, I mean, thousands of dollars, we've been discussing this dam, it's still sitting there. And it hasn't changed. But the minute you start removing dams, you get a stream. It's going to shrink.
Oh, I totally agree with that.
People up north are here have done it. And when they do it, what they do is they plant trees, plant plants along the sides. And then when the high waters come, it washes it all back out. You got nothing but a mud pot. People that are worried about not being able to put their boat in, you're not going to put your boat in when that, when that shrinks up. I'm not a big one on the kayaking part, although I enjoy that. But to tell you the truth, I think the Whitewater thing is a, that's a nightmare waiting to happen. Somebody's going to die from that. That's why I agree with the mayor on that one. From a safety factor, it's just not there. It's not feasible for the fire department either.
Well, realize that the impoundment depth will be much further north of where it is today on the east side of the river. So think of the river level at the, below the dam. That's going to slowly rise and probably end up about where the boat club is. So that, that deep hole that's there is no longer going to be a deep hole.
I'd probably look into the hydraulics. I'd look into the new...
I think it's interesting, but as far as I know, that that's not an option for Batavia or for Illinois.
Then look as hard as you can about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next?
My name is Derek Smrzuski. I reside at 552 Carriage Drive in, in Batavia. We are gearing this thing as a, as a cost, you know, one of the things that we're concerned with is cost, how much is it going to cost to do this thing? Option A could have a, could have a, some unforeseen circumstance, circumstances where when the river level drops, like the pool, the quarry pool, our Depot Pond could drain and we could have some anticipated expenses involving that. So we really don't know what any of these options are going to cost. But my suggestion is, first of all, I would like the city to maintain the current recreation that we have on the impoundment. It's just not about the Depot Pond. It's about the impoundment, the boating, the paddle boarding, the fishing and so forth on the impoundment. I think we do need the deep water for the fish. I think there's a way of improving, like to keep the existing recreation that we have. I'd like the city to improve and introduce new recreation and new reasons for people from outside of Batavia and within Batavia to come downtown. Whether it's to observe, whether it's to wait, or whether it's to kayak, create something exciting. Don't squander this opportunity. What I'd like to do is an extended invitation. We've done this at the end of the summer, but only one alderman took us up on the offer. I would love the opportunity of getting as many of you folks as possible together, Park District together. Let's take a walk along the riverfront, you know, starting over at Duck Island down. Let's talk about the possibilities, pros and cons. Let's take a look at what Yorkville has done, how they've done it.
Eric, can you come back in front of the, the mic so that way that's on the broadcasting and people that are watching can hear you?
I would like to invite as many of you folks from the city in the Park District to first of all, tour together the river, talk about some of the pros and cons, talk about some of the possibilities. Let's also take a look at Yorkville, see what they've did, how they've done it. I am a kayaker. I do use that section of the river and there are people there, Chris, quite often, quite a few of them actually. It's not going to be a $10 million proposition for us, but it does draw people to Yorkville, which is sort of...
I was going to say you were under $10. Wow, okay. That's amazing.
Nick, can you mute your microphone, please?
So again, I would, I would love to get together with you folks and look at the possibilities here. Look at what Yorkville, see what we can learn from that. Also, let's take a look at the master river corridor, master plan for St. Charles and what they're prioritizing, what they are planning. And they are planning a whitewater feature, not so much a whitewater feature. They are planning an active lifestyle recreational feature on a river in St. Charles as well that maintains the impoundment and introduces some recreational facilities in St. Charles. Thank you, free time.
Thank you. Next?
Hi, I'm Marilyn Weir. I live at 282 North Water Street. I'm one of those darn Water Street people you keep hearing from. And we do appreciate all of your time and effort here. A couple of things. Mr. Solfa, if you guys don't believe in, in the results of surveys, why do you keep doing them? Because you're only going to get 4% or 5% or maybe on a good day, 10% back. So if they don't work, then why even bother? Why put it out, all the effort of sending out all those postcards to get everybody to do it and then say, "Ah, but they don't work, so we're going to ignore it." Also, to your point about Yorkville, I've only been there twice. And the two times I've been there, it was so crazy busy. Families were tubing. There were Whitewater raft, I mean, there were people in kayaks, there were people in canoes. It was so busy. And they have one restaurant there and they were killing it because it's not really in their downtown, so they really can't spread all of the economic development out all over. So this one little restaurant was just doing a great business. But if you have it in a bigger area like our downtown, it's going to spread to more businesses. So I do believe that economic development is a, is a very important part of this. I believe I've also sent you some videos. South Bend and some other cities took what they had, they had to take out their dam and they put in a Whitewater, I don't know if you call it rapids, but it was kind of a water play area. Over the last 30 years, they've taken in $100 million. That's not bad. It's 100 million, $10 million a year, did I figure? I don't know. 100 million, I guess. Anyway, it has proven to be economically feasible. Also, they have used theirs for training for water safety. Mayor, I totally agree. We want this to be as safe as possible. Batavia is an amazing town. We don't want to put our citizens in jeopardy. But you've hired Hitchcock, who I assume are experts at this, at designing this. So why don't we let them design something that will be safe and will also draw people to our downtown? My husband and I are fairly recent residents of Batavia, but we have, you know, as we've learned more, we've just become so impressed with what you have done here. The history of this community spirit is just amazing. The river... The River Walk is just such an impressive example of that. You brought volunteers together, you brought in corporate sponsors, you made it happen and it's doing exactly what you wanted it to do. You, you created the Fox River Trail and the River Walk and they're working. They brought in more development, they brought in the condos. I mean, would they be here today without having done all that work previously? I kind of doubt it. So, you know, to say that the people on the river, their comments shouldn't be important, we're not here because, we're here because you had already developed things. And, and so by developing it, you, you just create more economics opportunities for everyone. But now I think it's the time to resurrect that creativity and that vision that, that we know Batavia is, is capable of. Many other cities have used their, their waterways to create economic development. I mean, obviously we're not Chicago, but look at Chicago, what they did with Navy Pier. That was a bunch of broken down, empty warehouses. And what did they do? They put their money into it, they made it one of the biggest attractions in Chicago. On a smaller scale, I think Batavia has that ability. And, and I've seen the vision here and I hope that this council and mayor, I hope that you will also see this vision and, and work to, to create what we really know can happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Garrett Schweikoffer, Batavia resident. So first I wanted to start with saying I am all for building up the depot pond. I want to, by modest means, keep the tradition and the heart of Batavia with the water and the ice skating. I also would like to build and create a world-class nature sanctuary, returning the land to mother, to the natural state to encourage birds, reptiles, amphibians and insects. I suggest a smaller depot pond, potentially an artificial spring that will allow us to control the water levels with the pump. Keeping the pond smaller will allow for a more natural scenic beauty and an artificial small stream linking to the river potentially. And economically, I think that by letting nature take its course, it will naturally restore the habitat. This will also make the pond easier for the water of the pond to freeze and extend the season of the ice skating. By controlling the depth of the pond, we can guarantee with more accuracy that it will be frozen as this year, we barely had any time to ice skate. Now this will require significant long-term investment and continued support and will bring Batavia together around conservation and community. I don't see this as in a conflict, I see this as an opportunity to put Batavia on the map for embracing Mother Nature and for taking the dam down and bringing something much better to the river. I'm a kayaker and you know why you don't see many kayaks on the river? No one wants to kayak near a dam. Currently, there is no kayak infrastructure. We need to position ourselves to benefit from the taking down of the dam. This is no Colorado river. No one will, I won't say no one, but very few people will come here to use a small, tiny whitewater section. They will use some features, some play features, as you said, and they will use a lazy river. So we need to set up Batavia as a mainstay of infrastructure. I don't know, maybe setting up shuttle buses that will take kayakers and their boats up and down the river, something like that. But I think we need to focus on the pond and let me just say one thing right now. The pond as it is, is disgusting. Okay, you know, I will not kayak in that pond. It is filled with sludge. That's a travesty. Fix the pond. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Ron Anderson. I live at 250 North Water Street. First of all, I'd like to sort of suck at what Marilyn said about the use of the Yorkville kayak area. I don't live in Yorkville, but I am a member of church there, but I've been by that area many, many times and I've seen a lot of kayak tubing activity out there. So, you know, that, that does happen, maybe not every day, but it is a definite plus for that area. The home that I bought, the previous owners were very active kayakers and their favorite place to put in was right across from the Pegbon Center. They would bring their kayaks down there and they would launch and they would go out of the pond and they would go up the river. You stay close enough to the shore and it's, it's safe, even though you're close to the dam. So they would kayak, you know, up the Fox River ways and come back down, get back out at the, you know, in the pond. We've talked about the berm that will be needed for, if we do pot, if we do option A, we'll need that berm to hold the water in the pond, the water that the pumps will have to pump into the pond at a pretty large rate in order to make up for the evaporation. Well, that berm that holds the water in the pond will also keep any kayakers who may be coming down from the north from coming into our pond. They will have no good place to get out in Batavia. They will simply whizz right by and maybe they'll go as far as North Aurora and get out on the park there, buy their coffee and sweet roll at Hunter's. It's a great place. So anyway, I think maintaining the pond as a, a berm type of an area, you, you really limit the opportunity that pond gives you as a, as the best place to put in for the Fox River. As a kayaker, I do a little kayaking, but as a kayaker, I like to put in to calm water. I don't want to go putting into like that little portage around the dam. I would not put my kayak in there, that would wash me away and I'd probably drown. So I think Plan B will keep the pond as it is, as a nice access to the river and would be a good way to go. Thank you.
Anyone else? Come on up.
Hi, my name's Andrew Deitchman. I'm on the Environmental Commission, so I just wanted to follow up on the memo that we all submitted to you all today or yesterday for you all to look at. It's been mentioned a couple of times in here, the position of the Environmental Commission is that the dam should be removed, the, and completely taken away and allow the river to flow freely to help for the quality of the water in the river, the quality of the fish, the invertebrates, mussels, all those in the river and for the health of the river. We did not take a position on the, the final deposition or the, of the depot pond and the decision as to what happens on that side of the island. It was solely about opening up the river for the environment and to help the river quality and the water quality. So I didn't know if any of the aldermen had any questions on that memo. I, I think Alex did a great job writing it, so.
I just thank you guys again for your input on these matters as a commission selected by the mayor to, as experts, you know, I do appreciate the feedback that you provide us on these important decisions that we do have to make and the impact that it has.
Sure. Happy to be able to help. All right, thanks.
Okay, thanks for sitting through the meeting with us. I think, you know, from what we've listened to tonight, I think we need to, as a council, make a decision what we want to go back to the park district with. I don't know if we want to do a straw poll or how we want to come to consensus on that, but I think that's where we need to be, hate to use that, but I think that's where we need to arrive at so that we can get to move forward with the park district or to have a good conversation with the park district about what we think is the correct way forward with this. Because I think, we've talked about this a lot, a lot of different people have brought up the fact that we have talked about this for a long time and it needs to be something that fits in with our river master plan that we, we so desperately want to have a framework that includes what we do here and where we go in the rest of the river so that we can plan for those things. You know, I, I know we need to spend money in a lot of different areas along the river and I think this is to me, one of the big hurdles we have is we get to the point, we have a plan and then we don't do anything with it. And I really feel like, again, this is one of those moments when the city council has to take ownership of this and do what we feel the public is wanting us to do and what is the best thing for Batavia for us to do and move this forward and actually get this done. Again, I think if we delay at all, we're going to lose whatever funding we can get from the state and whatever cooperation and agreements we can get from the state to get this done. Whether we take the dam out completely and, and berm the pond in or whether we create something new out there, you know, within the channel that's there and trying to preserve the impoundment going north, we have to work that out amongst ourselves and make that decision and move forward. Laura?
We have one member of the public attending who has her hand up.
Oh, okay.
It's Cindy Skrood from Fox River Study Group.
Okay. Why don't we get that in before we take any more comment from council? So go ahead, Cindy.
Yes, thank you. I'm Cindy Skrood. I chair the Fox River Study Group and I want to thank the city of Batavia for being a member of our group and, and for serving on our, our board for, for, for many years. The Fox River Study Group's main focus is thinking long-term about how to improve the water quality throughout the length of the Fox River. And so this is an issue that we, as the whole Fox River community must address under the Clean Water Act. And so we had provided, submitted to staff and provided comments to this meeting where we had our consultant GeoSynTech review the five conceptual designs. And from that review, the options A, C and D provide the most benefits to water quality and ecology due to the elimination of the impoundment within the river. It's just simply easier to improve water quality in a free-flowing river. So all the communities on the Fox River are working hard to reduce the nutrients they put into the river and that are causing the problems with low oxygen and high algae levels that make the river green, specifically reducing nutrients from their wastewater plants. So thinking long-term, our modeling shows that dam removal can help to improve the water quality of the river without having to further ratchet down wastewater nutrient inputs. So I think this is another factor in cost that the city should take into account in its discussions. And if you have any questions about the, the observations and analyses that we provided you, we'd definitely be happy to, to field any questions. I really appreciate the difficulty of these discussions with the, trying to also preserve, preserve depot pond, but I think you've got some good options before you that also then provide the best for water quali, the water quality of the Fox River. So thank you.
I guess I have one question when we have you online. If the two communities immediately north of us decide to keep the impoundments that they have and do whatever water features or however change they want to do with the dams that they have located in their cities, how would that affect our section of the river if we were to completely remove our dam? I mean, our, our section of the river, our dam really only affects about a mile north of where the dam is. And that's going back to the IDNR study that was done, I don't know, 15 or 20 years ago.
Yeah, that's a, you know, this is a, this is a struggle with, with the many dams on, on the Fox and certainly, you know, each dam, each impoundment provides, as you well know, a place where sediment accumulates, the still waters provide, provide kind of an ideal habitat for algae to flourish. So, you know, I won't lie to you, it's the, you know, the more we keep, the more of the impoundments we keep, the harder it is for the river to, to cleanse itself. So, but I think every one that we, that every reach that we make more free-flowing is a benefit to the river as a whole.
All right, thank you. All right, I see we've got a few hands up online. Mark, go ahead.
Yeah, Alan, I think you, you said it. One, I guess I should start off saying, this is a great thoughtful discussion, I really appreciate everybody's thoughts into this and, and, you know, obviously there's a lot of passion around the table on this issue and it's, I appreciate listening to everybody and everything everybody has to say. That being said, I think you nailed it, we've been talking about this for a long time. I think we should just get to the point that we do a straw poll. I don't know if that just means everybody just says the, the letter that they want as we go around the table, but I think we just need to start moving forward on this.
Thank you. Dan?
Thank you. So from a practical standpoint, we do have a, we do have a threat of a mayor's veto. So whatever the outcome of our straw poll is, if we do not have at least 10 of us, we definitely need to, need to speak to the mayor and see what, what we can, what legislation we can give him that he's going to sign and, and not veto. That said, the last time he threatened a mayor's veto, we did go to referendum and the mayor changed his stance after the people spoke. So I imagine that that might be our way out of this, out of this conundrum.
We'll cross that bridge when we get there.
Fair enough.
Okay. Abby?
First just wanted to say thank you to all the residents and everyone that has contributed to the conversation tonight, the Environmental Commission, to Cindy for coming and providing your expertise as well. One thing you said, Alan, a minute ago was that we often have these plans and then we never do anything with them, which is a frustration that I have seen over just my couple of years that I've been on city council, that we, we, we don't spend money very often or willingly on this council and we don't, we have not funded a lot of these projects that we really want to do. You know, to Gary's memo earlier today about the unfunded capital projects, that's concerning to me because if, when, if and when we do talk about raising taxes, then every conversation after that is, is colored by the fact that we've just raised taxes to do this, so now we can't do X, Y and Z. And we, we are afraid to do anything further. And so without a real plan on how we're, how we're going to do the more expensive option and everything that comes after that, because still everything that comes after that to redevelop our, our, our riverfront is still going to have to happen with option B versus option A, that we're just setting ourselves behind as we go, as we move forward. And then two other quick comments to, to address some of the public comments, to Ms. Bell who talked about the pesticides and the, I will throw in, you know, the, the road salt and other things that really harm our river as well, we should have ordinances about that. And I'm glad you brought that up because I think that should be a conversation and a discussion we have later and we should have with our Environmental Commission as well. And to, to Marilyn's comment about surveys, I think that's another conversation that we should have as a group too, because we've seen failed referenda here in the past in Batavia. In my recent memory, there's been a handful of, of times where we just didn't seem, across government bodies, not just city council. government bodies, not just city council, where we didn't have our finger on the pulse of what the community really wants. And we're going through the same engagement processes over and over again and expecting different results. And so, I'm supporting your comment, Marilyn, and also not coming with any sort of solution because I don't know what the solution is there. But I think it's something that we should address. We should address our engagement processes so that we get better feedback, so that we get better input and we get more informed before we go into these discussions.
Thank you. Leah?
Alan, I was just, with whatever option we decide to move forward with, at this point, it's just conceptual, right? So, we're just giving Hitchcock the permission to move forward with a concept, for them to go do further research, further testing, to come back and say, this is feasible, this isn't feasible. Like, so this is not a final anything at this point in reality. And in fact, even if we went with one of the options that has, for lack of a better word, the white water rapids, it would still need to be approved by the IDNR that it's safe. So, and Hitchcock would have to do that research also. So, nothing that is of extreme danger would be even allowed to move forward. Am I understanding that correctly?
And basically, too.
That really is an excellent way of putting it. And I understand that that has been part of the public frustration as well, is that they would like to see very detailed plans about each one of the different concepts that require engineering studies in order to answer those questions. And so, it's sort of a, kind of a catch-22. But the, what we're saying is, we're just trying to land on a concept, and then we move forward and we learn more about that concept and what its effects will be and what the, with more accuracy, what the costs will be. And we could, at any juncture along there, say, stop, that is a deal-breaker. We're going to have to go back and look at a different option, go in a different direction. So, realize that this is not a commitment to the price tag, the tax increase, or any particular drawing that we have seen at this point.
And then also, the timeline, just by the nature, this is not, this would not be imminent anyway. We're talking years down the line, right?
Exactly. Between the multiple phases of engineering, the studies that need to be performed, and the permitting at both the state and federal level, it will be multiple years before construction could occur. In fact, I would say the soonest would be 2023, but it could be 2025, when we're ready to begin construction of this because of the complexity.
Laura, I know this was discussed before in terms of timeline, but I don't remember the expiration date for the government funds, the federal funds, in terms of them paying for actually getting rid of the dam.
For sure.
When is that again?
Any given budget. You know, every year the state passes a budget.
It could disappear anytime.
It could disappear anytime.
Okay.
So, I think at this point, we need to decide, are we going to just do a straw poll and see if we can come up with a consensus on an option?
Is Dan's hand still up?
Dan, you still have your hand up, or did you forget to take it down?
Sorry.
Okay. I think, you know, from what I've heard tonight, the only two that I've heard is A and B. And, you know, and I'm not discounting where you would probably like to be keen in, but I think you've changed that to compromise, to move this forward. So, I think easiest way for me, and then it's also in the record, we'll just have Jenny do a straw poll, and she can write down who picks what option, and we'll just go right through like we're doing roll call. If you would do that for me, Jenny?
Sure.
Thank you.
I could start with you, if you don't mind?
You can start with me.
Okay, great. What letter?
I'll do B.
Okay. Darren?
A.
Lehman?
B.
Ayazi?
A.
Malay?
B.
Uwer?
E.
Jerome?
E.
Vogel singer?
A.
Miller?
A.
Rosado?
B.
Back?
A.
A?
A.
Connolly absent? Chanson?
B.
B? And Soffa?
A.
A. Six As? Seven Bs? All right? Thirteen, yep.
Okay.
To be fair, I know where Tom would vote too, since he already said it in the earlier meeting, but unless he changes mind.
Yeah. So, that could put us right in that fun spot where we have to deal with the mayor breaking the tie. Not where I thought it would be, but it is what it is. So, I think that gets us to the point where we have, we have to make a decision, yeah, because we're kind of going to be stuck in the mud here and that's...
Right.
Hey, Alan.
Mark, go ahead.
Um, the, I don't know that this is a seven-six vote here. This is why we need to talk to the Park District, because right now, we're, if you look at it from the votes we have right now, it is a majority in favor of B. And if the Park District has, if their votes are equal to ours, that's why we haven't figured this out. And the Park District is five votes, and they all say B, now you're looking at 12-6 or 12-7. So, we haven't decided that, and we just need to get back together with the Park District and talk about this some more, in my opinion.
I actually think that what you will hear from the Park District is that they expected it to be, the Park District was one vote and the city was one vote. Because they did not go into it with the intention that they would always have minority votes on any decision that is made if it was a joint project.
Sure, I guess I understand that, but all due, all due respect to the mayor, I don't know that the mayor gets a tie-breaking vote between the Park District and the city. So, I don't know how we solve that, but...
He doesn't. He would, he would only come into play if the city council were seven to seven.
Sure.
Dan, go ahead.
To limp into this with a seven to six is not, not how I was expecting this at all. I don't feel comfortable moving forward with option B if there's that much division among us. I feel like we, hate to say it, I feel like we, we need to talk some more, or we need, we need to figure out what, what is preventing a consensus here.
I think from what I've heard tonight, a majority of it is cost. And the fact that the, several of the people that have indicated A are also feeling that the environmental side of the equation plays a bigger part than preserving the impoundment. I mean, I don't know if that's what anybody else feels, but that's what I think I heard
Yeah, I think you've got two positions which are very difficult to bring together. However, one way, a possibility of bringing it together could be the, somebody said lazy river aspect to it, where there would be features, but they would not impound. So, in the nature of what you're talking about, like riffles, things to go, things to navigate around, but they're not fully impeding...
Well, I think all that does is stretch out the drop on the side that would change the elevation from the upper pool to the lower one. Abby, I see you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, to Mark's point, the way I saw it moving forward eventually is that we would probably have to sign or enact some sort of an intergovernmental agreement again on whatever direction we decide to go on. So, that would have to be a solely city council vote. We would have to vote a majority to pass, you know, to sign on to that agreement. So, regardless of how the combined, you know, individual votes go, you know, we still have to come to a majority, a majority vote. And to Dan's point, I wonder, I wonder if going to Hitchcock and going to the Park District and saying, you know, look, we're split on this, can we enter the next phase of development on these different options with both A and B to understand more of the hydrology, more of the costs, more of the impact? Because what I also don't want to have happen, you know, to Leah's point about how long, how far along this process is going to have to go, how many years down the road are going to have to go? If we, if we limp into option B with a really weak majority, and then a couple of years down the line, we've invested a lot of money, but we're kind of getting bad input, or our research on the costs is, you know, the costs are going up. The IDNR, Army Corps are saying, we really don't like this design, it's going to cost you X, Y, and Z more. If the costs are going up, but we've already invested the money into the research and development of this option, then I've seen that come back and say, but we've already spent all this time, we've already come to an agreement on B, we've already spent all this money and research on B, and then we keep chasing something that maybe isn't looking as good anymore, but we have that lost cost. So, could we move forward maybe with option A and B into whatever the next phase of understanding those options as a way to move forward?
I think that the Park District would look at that to say, if the city wants to solely be the one to pay for the costs associated with exploring option A, they would probably be okay with that and only share in the costs of exploring option B.
What if you tell them we only want option, they want option B, so they got to pay for the exploration of option A, and we pay for option A? Even if we are divided on option A and B, then we're still splitting the costs.
But it still costs the taxpayers money.
It does.
Still their money.
Right, and that's why I think we need to come to some kind of consensus on one option to move forward, or we're spending twice as much money to make a decision if that's going to be feasible and fundable for us to do, which I think is crazy for us to spend twice as much money to get to that point.
How much money are we talking about at this point?
I don't know. I can, I can ask them, but I'm guessing that it is at least tens of thousands of dollars.
It's significant, and I'm sure it's a lot more than we've already spent to get through the next steps.
Thanks, Alan. Yeah, I just wanted to say, I'm fine with limping in, because I was limping into my B opinion as it was. I don't have enough information to have a definitive opinion one way or another, or otherwise I'd be here trying to sell it one way or another. I think we know the next step, sitting down with the, with the, with the Park District. But all these talks, this is a 100-year decision. It's okay if we're not forcing A or B tonight. We can move to the next level where we're at right now. I need more information to support either one of them, so I'm limping forward with whatever you guys decide to go with tonight.
What is some of the next steps, Laura? Is some of that doing the investigation, like how deep the river is and what some of that is?
Hydrological studies.
Is it possible that that could contribute to both A and B? And if we get some of that information, that can help us decide. Like, if we know really how deep it is, they'll be like, well, then you have to put this many tons of rocks back in to create the weirs, and that could be, you know, X amount of dollars. And where we're thinking of putting the berm, like, it's this deep, and, you know...
Really, what the hydrological study is to do is to say, when the changes are made, how will that change the river? So, it really is two different projects, because one is the river is left to flow freely, versus the other one is doing a hydrological study of the effect of putting in an impoundment. So, it really is two different projects. The results wouldn't contribute to determining which of those was more favorable, except that you're just pursuing the two projects. It's, it'll be the cost of two projects.
Keenan, go ahead.
I had made this suggestion, I think during the second or third meeting we had earlier, which was, there were two decisions that had to be made, is what we were going to do with the dam and what the Park District was going to do to provide recreation. I don't know if when we get to this point and we can't come to an agreement, do we forge ahead with removing the dam while concurrently the Park District plans to do whatever it is they want to do and put it on their referendum, because that's what they want to do, what they can come to a consensus about? I don't know if, I'm talking about long-term, if we get through all of the hydraulics and all of the discussions and we can't come to it, or seven-seven and it gets vetoed, whatever happens, we don't want to miss money removing the dam, but the Park District wants to, wants to continue the impoundment. If they want to continue with the impoundment and provide the recreation, do they just pick up, do they plan by themselves and move forward with that?
I think, as has been mentioned by others, that the conversation around how the finances work out is the next discussion. So, may, perhaps, if city council's decision were that the important thing to us is this removing of the dam, and we know we want some concept that keeps the Depot Pond, but we can, you know, depending on how the finances are going to be handled, then we work on what type of impoundment goes in on the other side. I don't know.
And I think that they're, they're both so linked together.
Yeah.
Both decisions are so linked together because they rely on each other, whether you split it apart and make a separate pond, or whether you create an impoundment to keep the pond by rearranging where the dam is, because that's really what you'd be doing.
Right, I'm just talking about if this body here can't keep, can't move forward, at least the Park District could move forward with their plan. That's what I'm trying to get at. If we can't agree on something, then, then we could at least agree on removing the dam and then concurrently, and I don't know how it could be put together, I have no idea, but allowing them to move forward and allowing us to move forward at the same time, so that we're not just stuck in the mud.
I think by saying, let's explore option B, is the way to do that.
Mark, I see you have your hand up again.
Yeah, I agree with what Laura just said there at the end. I know what Dan said, he likes to have more consensus. That's what I've known Dan to be the whole time I've been on council. And Nick, kind of the same thing, he's okay with limping ahead. We've had seven to six votes. We've had votes where it's a slim majority and we've had to move on. We just voted, granted, it's not a binding vote or anything, but we just voted seven to six. Let's just move on with option B as let's explore that. We just had a majority vote. Not everybody's here, not everybody's at every single meeting either, and I've missed meetings that I miss an opportunity to vote on, and that's, it happens. So, I say, we just said seven-six to explore option B. We should just move on with option B.
Chris?
I believe that's a disingenuous comment, because everybody on council knows that Alderman Connolly supports option A.
That's not necessarily true, because I have had conversations with Alderman Connolly, like I have had with most of you on council about this.
We can talk, we can move forward with, when... We can talk, we can move forward with, with have that conversation, but we know where these 13 people are. So when we sit down with the Park District in the next meeting, we're, we're going to have more conversations about cost and about...
You can say...
Yeah.
Let's move forward with exploration of concept B with the knowledge that there are at least six aldermen who at this point prefer concept A, but are willing to go down the path of exploring concept B. But, you know, until you guys vote on, really vote at a city council meeting for an IGA, as Abby mentioned, it really isn't the commitment that you're going to go for that particular project.
The definition of a straw poll vote is, is just to get an idea where we're at. We're obviously clear whether, whether Joe's here or not, we could sit here and say it's, it's, we're pretty even. We're unclear. We need more information to make a definitive vote. This isn't official. We need more information. We need more, 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 uh, a meeting with, with, uh, with the Park District. We need more time.
Well, I think at this point, then we need to get the Park District back in here and have Hitchcock and maybe, or you can communicate with them that we would like an idea of what they think the next step or two is going to cost for both A and B so that way we can make a decision. Do we try to do parallel, you know, investigation moving forward with it, or do we have to try to decide and pick one and move that forward? And I think too, when we get the Park District in here, we'll find out if they are a hundred percent behind going with B, or if there is a split on their board as well as ours.
I think that'd be helpful too. And also knowing that even with B, I mean, even the people who are always supportive of that, it needs to be, that would have to be rearranged anyway to switch it to the other side. And I mean...
No, that was option E.
Was that option E?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Option B is not, okay, option B is not need to be rearranged.
B is the four.
Just the four step downs. Okay. Okay.
Eunice?
Laura, when you talk with the Park District, can you...
Multiple times.
No, I said, when you. Yeah. Can't, we've brought this up many times. Can you ask them to have an idea of what they think their cost split is and what their plans are going to be for their options? Cause we've asked that probably now in every single meeting we've been at, but we still don't have an answer.
Recreational function. So when you go, when we go back to the original, when we started talking about this, and it said, it's intended to enhance recreational function, river ecology, cultural importance, and stewardship of Batavia's most special natural resources for generations. So when I look at that, I feel like, you know, you have to kind of think of the two plans. Everybody can look at it the way they want, but I go back to what we originally came to, and this is what we all decided going into this. So I would be entrusted in understanding from the Park District's side, what their recreational function is.
Yeah. So, um, what they've been waiting for is the recreational amenities that they would plan are very dependent upon which concept was selected.
They should have it for both concepts then. Like some plan, like some idea of some of the things that they're going to do.
So that is what Hitchcock Design Group has been hired to do, actually, was to come up with that master plan. And we asked for the first part to be looking at the area that contains the dam because of the opportunity with the IDNR funding. And at first Hitchcock Design had slides that contained a number of recreational amenity suggestions.
Right.
And after that first meeting, council in the Park District said, we will be here for three years trying to select which amenities. First, let's focus on where is there going to be water and where is there going to be land? And will we have the pond? And will we have impoundment? And once we make those decisions, then we can identify the amenities that would go along with them. We can take a pause and I think it will add cost to the project for Hitchcock Design Group to work with the Park District to come up with amenities for each different concept. But that, then we'll probably be several months down the road. But if that's a different direction, maybe that's something to discuss in a joint city council, park board meeting.
And again, like I don't think we should spend money on two separate plans to like fully vet them out to get to the point where we make a decision on one of those two plans.
Let's ask them for feedback on, like we said, if we can move forward with the B plan, say, can you give us ideas about what things you would see as the recreational aspects that would go along with B?
I will say that by removing those, by not having the Park District at least give an idea of their vision, that's when you end up with people that just do not respond because, and then we're left with picking an option because people are like, well, let's say option D. They had the amenities that, and an idea of what they wanted and said this, they don't even have to say, they just need to give us a concept of what kind of things they're thinking about doing. No cost. And we had that, and they asked us to take it off because not everybody on council wanted those off because it, it, it solely helps influence the idea of what could happen to those things. So people would vote for different things if they thought these things could be provided.
Realize those things did not come from the Park District.
Right.
They were suggestions from Hitchcock Design Group.
And that's why I kept asking...
So they have sort of an idea.
Who's they?
Hitchcock.
Okay. Hitchcock looked at what amenities other communities had put alongside similarly configured riverbank. Um, so they were by no means trying to suggest that that's what we should select because they would look to us to find out what is our vision, the Park District vision and the city vision, and then they would design to those visions. They were just saying, here's an example, here's an example, here's an example. And they had a lot of different things.
So I think to Alderman Miller's point, it doesn't cost the Park District any money to use their brain power to, to offer to tell us what concepts they have for option A and option B. I mean, it's not real, I don't think that's asking too much. They're the ones who are claiming that there's all these recreational activities they want to maintain. Tell us what, tell us what they wanted.
They've hired Hitchcock Group to come in because Hitchcock Design Group works with park districts, municipalities to design these things. It's what St. Charles did for their $41 million plan that they have up in St. Charles. They worked with a design group to come in and come up with that concept. It wasn't just the city of St. Charles, um, public works and community development departments designing that.
So I feel like we're in a circular discussion here then.
Well, here's, here's the other thing is when looking for the survey, I found their 2021, 2020 master plan. In their master plan, there was a list of things that they wanted to, um, preserve, and there were five things or so. The depot pond was on there. None of the board members voted to save the depot pond in that. They have a master plan that talks about, um, providing more recreation down here by the river, um, sunrise yoga, all these, a bunch of different things. So they have an idea, but they're not telling us what they are. So that's why I want, like, here's two options. Get together and brainstorm. What do you five or six of the park board think you would want to do with this space? Hitchcock doesn't have to be involved in it. That way it gives us an idea. Like if it could, they come back with something that says, here's what we think we want to do. It could change a lot of our ideas of what it is they want to do.
Here's feedback that they did provide was that with regard to, um, the, the concept D and anything that created additional green space, they said that they would have to factor in the cost of all those amenities, and they have no idea at this point what, what those things would cost because they don't have, um, those concepts formulated yet. So I guess we could ask the Park District to work independently with Hitchcock Design Group to, uh, come up with plans for the other concepts. But this was, this was the purpose of hiring Hitchcock Design Group was to work toward development of a, a plan that could be implemented.
I need to, I, I really, I've been thinking about this for a couple of minutes here, and I think we need to step back and remember, this isn't just about what the Park District wants to program or do down along the river. This is about the river, the rest of our community, the rest of our area, local area here that are going to use the river for whatever they want or whatever's available on the river. This isn't just about what the Park District thinks they can do with the depot pond or with the river. This is about the entire community of Batavia and the surrounding area being able to access and utilize our river.
And that's why they had this be a joint project.
Right.
Between the two of us as opposed to just hiring them.
And I think we're focusing too much on the fact of what's the Park District going to do with whatever's in the river or around the river. It's also about what the rest of us are going to do with the river, whether we're citizens in Batavia or Geneva or Naperville or Bowling Brook or wherever we come from to be in Batavia and either ride a bike or be on the river in whatever mode we want to. So I mean, that has to be part of this discussion, and it has to be part of our decision, and it has to be beyond the scope of what the Park District thinks they're going to do with whatever's down here. I mean, that's something that I think we really have to keep in mind that again, this isn't just about the microscopic view of the Park District of what they think they could do or program downtown along the river. It, it's about so much more than that, and it's 20, 30, 50, 100 years from now, what are they going to be able to do with the river? I mean, 100, 120 years ago, it was all about trying to create as much power as they could from the river, so they built as many riverbanks as they could and as much space as they could get as close to the river with. And, you know, and we've compared Naperville to this. Naperville is in no way, shape, or form anywhere close to what natural of the DuPage River used to be. That's all man-made. That's all, almost all hardscape downtown, and it's a totally different environment. So, you know, I think we need to, I think, open up our focus on what we're really trying to do here is to figure out long-term decisions about the river and how does that fit into a master river plan.
It does, and it's the next phase that we're headed into.
Right. And I think...
So once the concept was decided, then the next phase was to do all of this visioning and planning together and then come into one plan, prioritize the projects, and then implement them, along with identifying the funding sources together.
So when we go back and I look at this, you know, comprehensive plan, when we talk about recreational function, when I think about that from the city standpoint, I see that not only from inside the river, but also outside of the river. And that includes paths for walking and biking, um, accessibility for anybody that, you know, however they need to be able to get around. And then within the river, make it a safe place, reduce the liability so people can canoe, paddle boat, kayak, fish. Those are the things that are going to bring the people down to our community. And so if I look at it from just my standpoint, from the city standpoint, I look at that as, as the recreation, the river ecology, taking that out. We've had our experts, you know, speak to us about that, how this will help the ecology of our, of our, of the river, especially within our area. The cultural importance by doing some of these things, it's accessible to anybody, um, to anybody. You know, you don't have to have like a special material to do the whitewater rafting. You can, anybody can walk the path, and it doesn't cost them any extra money. Um, so that's, you know, as I take a look at, at the concepts, I kind of focus on what we all agreed to in the very beginning and how that will help the development of our downtown area.
Okay. So I think we need to get Hitchcock and the Park District back in this room.
Yep.
And we need to, you know, I, I think find out, one, are they a hundred percent behind B or whatever percentage they are behind B? And then I think we need to decide if that's where we want to go and what that cost is, then we make that decision and move that forward.
All right.
And the six people so far that don't want that, if they want to talk to me or anybody else that wants to go with B, we can discuss the differences in it and the realities of where we would go with either one of those options. I would, like Dan said, I would like to see more support for that if we get to that point and make that decision. And if we do vote on that and where that goes. So I think that's our direction to the staff is to get Hitchcock and Park District back here and get us some, I guess, rough numbers on what, where the costs will be on how we move that forward, whether we do side by side or whether we do just one. Okay. And I think everybody that came down tonight to go through this and discuss with us and listen to us, and these decisions are never easy. It always amazes me when we go through and we have a hundred thousand, or a hundred million dollar budget discussion that we have and zero people show up to that. And we're spending millions of your tax dollars, and yet we can have discussions about a dam or chickens or crazy little things like that, and we have a hundred people that show up. So I do appreciate that you guys come down and spend the night, the, the night with us and go through this stuff. And, you know, we, we talk about the polling and we don't listen to that. Well, we have voter turnout and sometime it's below 10% of our registered voters in different precincts that, that actually vote in this town. So it's not just people that don't fill out the polls, people that don't actually go to the polls and vote. And that's real, that's really been my frustration all the time I've been on the council is, one, we never have anybody that runs against people after somebody gets in or is in for a term or two. And two, the engagement has fallen off so much over the last 15 years, um, as far as how many people we have on a regular basis in our audience. I know COVID had something to do with the last year or so, but it is really frustrating. And I do appreciate the fact that you guys are involved and want to come down here and want to be heard. So thank you. Yeah. I, I hope so. I'd like to, I'd like to see it be 15% or 20% or 30%, or you guys could all strive to vote as, as big a percentage as the homestead does.
Sarah has her hand up.
Sarah, go ahead.
Hi. I just wanted to echo, um, your sentiments, Ellen. Thank you to all the residents who came out, and thank you for your thoughtful comments, um, and your emails and for being involved in this process. We appreciate it. And it is good to hear from what people, we, it's good to hear what people think. So thank you.
Okay. We will end that discussion.
If you want to come up and use the mic. Can you come up and use the mic?
Eric Ashby, formerly to a Blair Street, a neighbor of Ellen's, recently Water Street. Um, I've taken some time to go to both the park board meetings and these meetings on many occasions. And, uh, it's really apparent to me that both groups just need to talk to each other, perhaps outside a formal setting. Perhaps you need to get together and vision together a little bit. I think the longer this goes, the more difficult it is to having a melding of the minds on what, what, what the two groups want to do for the citizens of Batavia. I assure you that both groups want to do really great things for the city of Batavia. I can tell that in their passion, but you're not spending very much time together. The park board informal feedback is, we're not invited. We're kind of ordered down to this room to present. We're not invited to be in person. We're, this is just sort of informal feelings that I'm getting from that group. From this group, I'm getting a lot of, they haven't, they haven't, they haven't. I, I do think there's an opportunity here to decrease the tension amongst the two teams, the two groups, two, two organizations looking out for Batavia, to come together and just have some of these more perhaps informal, but, but you, you need more conversation that is not rigorous conversation to see what your vision and what you're hearing as a vision is for the community. And the, the other thing, since I've got the mic, Tammy and I came here 23 years ago. And the, the other thing, since I've got the mic, Tammy and I came here 23 years ago, and we parked at the newly developed Long Water View, seeing the river, the Riverwalk development, and these communities that we've talked about were recently finished, 23 years ago when we came here, and we decided to move to Batavia. We didn't move to that water, but we decided to move to Batavia because of that water. We loved that view and what the community was doing to develop this downtown area. Tammy and I watched that happen for another 21 years, and we decided to take part in it by moving closer into it, being part of the tip, being part of a higher tax base, because the money's getting reinvested in this community, and it's doing really great things. You have an opportunity to continue to do that, and I know you're trying to. Just believe in, believe in the, the city of Batavia and the members of Batavia don't mind spending some money when you are as productive as you have been, and you have been productive. You've been, you've done a really nice job with this community, you have really great ideas about how to advance the community, and we just need to come together and get to those hard, simple majorities, but then get behind one another to get, to get the job done. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. And the only thing I'll say, you know, in response to that, is it's very difficult sometimes for us to meet informally, because we run into the wonderful thing called the Freedom of Information Act and Open Meetings Act, and we have to be really careful with that. So we, we try to do it, yes, there's a lot of formal, informal meetings, and I think we probably should have some more of those, so thank you.
Okay. All right. Alan, can, can I say one more thing? I, I do want to say thank you to everybody for showing up, but I, I think the city of Batavia and the Park District did a very good job on advertising and marketing citizen involvement. I mean, we spent months.
Right.
We only got 4% return, but...
We invited every household in the city of Batavia to participate.
And there is a lot of times where we get less than 10% voting. So...
And these groups like Hitchcock Group and the one who do our community survey, they'll say, "That's a great turnout, Batavia, really." That's, you know, does, we get a lot better turnout on community surveys than a lot of other communities, believe it or not. It's hard to get people to fill those out.
It is, it's just disappointing when you...
It is.
When you look at the numbers and how it's so small, you know...
And it's, and that's why when...
On big decision items.
I, I see both sides of, it's not really, the people have spoken if you didn't ask everybody, but we asked everybody to register their opinion, and not everybody did, so to Abby's point, well, we can study what, you know, if there are better ways of ascertaining public opinion, we certainly should look into those.
All right, let's move on then to project status, Laura.
I don't have anything new from yesterday.
Okay. And then we'd already changed item 22 into 6A, that, oh, next would be...
Did we skip 20?
Did we skip 20 though?
Did I skip 20? Oh. Groundwater use restrictions related to environmental cleanups. That's yours, Mike.
Yeah. Well, I think this...
If I can jump in, because we had talked about this as a staff earlier, knowing the length of tonight's agenda, this item can wait.
Yeah.
This item really needs a more detailed discussion, so unless council's really ambitious to talk about this tonight, I would suggest we wait till the next committee table.
Yes, I agree.
I am perfectly okay with pushing this off to another meeting, that, that's fine. No, it's a just a discussion topic, it's not an ordinance or anything, so we can just bring that back, and I think you're right, Gary, as long as there's nothing pressing that has to happen from our, our end to deal with anything that's out there right now, so I think that would be fine, and then we can maybe even get through the budget stuff and then bring this back.
Yeah.
For one of those meetings that doesn't have a lot on it.
Mm-hmm.
So we can actually spend, I think, some good time on this, because from what I read in there, I think we need to spend some time to talk about this.
It's an important decision.
Yeah, and how we handle that.
Mm-hmm.
I still got an hour and 45 minutes. Just kidding.
I only, Alderman Baron, I only noticed the meeting for today, not tomorrow, so I'm not sure if we would violate the Open Meetings Act if we go into November 10th.
All right. That being said, I would ask for a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Motion by Soffa, second by Miller, voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed?
Aye.
All right. All right, let's go home.
Tomusted.